Hello, everyone. We're going to get started, so thank you for coming to the Board of Education's special meeting. Today is October the 28th, and we're calling it to order at 6:00. And can we get a roll call, please?
Student trustee Chodak. Trustee, student trustee Mackenzie Shepherd is absent tonight. Trustee Boyd.
Here.
Trustee Inklis.
Here.
Trustee Khan.
Here.
Vice President Mahoney.
Here.
President Hopwood.
Yeah.
Superintendent Stone.
Here.
Thank you. And now we're going to move on to our mission statement and meeting norms. Student trustee, are you happy to read all of those with?
Okay.
The mission statement. The mission of Albany Unified School District is to provide excellent public education that empowers all to achieve their fullest potential as productive citizens. AUSD is committed to creating comprehensive learning opportunities in a safe, supportive, and collaborative environment, addressing the individual needs of each student. And so, meeting norms: maintain a focus on what is best for our students; ensure a safe environment for all views to be expressed; treating each other, staff, and the public respectfully; endeavor to find common solutions to issues through collaboration without sacrificing one's beliefs in what is best for students; and make a commitment to effective deliberation, each one listening with an open mind while others are allowed to express their own points of view even if one disagrees.
Thank you. Excuse me. And now we'll move on to the approval of the agenda. Choking over here. Yeah, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve this. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And now, Vice President Mahoney will do the pledge of allegiance while I recover.
(Pleading) Pledge of allegiance, free to fly, of the United States of America, and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, in the fold with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And now we're moving on to our spotlights and recognition section. And this month, we just have a proclamation recognizing November as Native American Heritage Month. So perhaps we could just, starting with trustee Chodak, could we just read a whereas each? We'll work down this way if that's okay. No hurry.
Whereas Albany Unified School District, AUSD, schools are located in the Ho'chin Territory of the Cho'chin'nee'au-speaking Indigenous Aloni people organized as a confederated villages of Lishan. That sounds, that sounds somewhat right, yeah. Also referred to as the Lishan Nation. And?
Whereas the city of Albany and AUSD recognize that we occupy the land originally protected by the confederated villages of the Lishan. And?
Whereas the city of Albany recognizes the Confederate villages of Lishan by flying their flag permanently at City Hall. And?
Whereas the Bay Area is home to a large population of Indigenous Americans, including people from the southwest Great Plains and eastern woodlands of what is now called the United States, as well as Indigenous Americans from Central and South America and other countries around the world. And?
Whereas Indigenous people in the Bay Area are leading important efforts to reawaken Indigenous languages, restore and protect the landscape, and protect sacred spaces for the benefit of all people. And?
Whereas the state of California has acknowledged its genocidal policies towards Indigenous people, beginning immediately upon the founding of the state and continuing into the recent past, public boarding schools for Indigenous children. And?
Whereas all too often, information and education about the history of settler colonialism in our area hides its cruelty and genocidal intent, while incorrectly implying that Indigenous people have vanished from our community. And?
Pardon. Whereas, okay, wait, now I've lost community. And? Whereas AUSD values tremendously the contributions of our Indigenous identified students, staff, and community members. And?
Whereas AUSD teaching staff from our elementary, middle, and high schools have, over the past year and a half, collaborated with the Lishan Nation and the Goro'te, thank you, land trust, to create the Lishan Nation Curriculum Collective and to write new curriculum for our schools that uplift the history and current successes of the Lishan Nation Curriculum, which has received positive feedback from both the Lishan Nation and our students. And?
Whereas AUSD teaching staff from our elementary, middle, and high school have, over the past six months, been working with community leaders at the Giltrac Community Farm in a project funded partly by the city of Albany's Soda Tax, where students can study ecology, food systems, and Indigenous sovereignty, including the cultural and values of the Lishan Nation. And?
Whereas the leadership of the Lishan Nation honored Albany High School by visiting the site in the spring of 2024, reviewing our work, and making note of a number of steps that the high school could take, come into a correct relationship with the Lishan Nation. And?
Whereas Indigenous Peoples' Day was celebrated as a national holiday on October 13th, 2025, and the month of November is designated as Native American Heritage Month at the state and federal level.
Now therefore be it resolved that the Albany Unified School District's governing Board of Education does hereby proclaim the month of November as Native American Heritage Month, recognizing and honoring Native American students and staff in an environment that honors their cultures and that welcomes their participation in every school space.
Yet further resolved, AUSD applauds the ongoing work of our staff, students, and community members to increase awareness of the Lishan Nation, its work, and the broader movement for Indigenous sovereignty, and specifically encourages district schools and teachers to commemorate this occasion with appropriate instructional materials and activities.
Thanks, everyone. So we do not need to vote on this. It's not a resolution. So we can move on now to our discussion section. And we will be holding a study session now on special education and our budget. And we are going to move down here to the little collection of tables. Okay, thank you.
President Hopwood, just one, President Hopwood.
Superintendent just made a good point, which is we could hold public comment now on this, just because whilst we're up here, it's a little easier to manage it than when we're down there. So does anybody here in person have public comment on this agenda item, the study session? Not seeing anyone. And let's see if anybody is raising their hand online. And I don't see anyone here either. So thanks so much. We will now continue.
Go ahead. President Hopwood, just a point. We have two microphones at the table, actually three, one in the middle, one here, and then another one that's a wireless. So in order to capture this all on Zoom, we should make sure you speak into the mic. Yeah, thank you.
(Audio cut off). Sorry, technical difficulties. Can I have one of them? Do you want me to send them or? Yeah, that would be good. I'll do them. You do that one. Yeah, I'll have you. Okay. (Audio cut off).
Do you have a new battery?
It's ready. (Audio cut off). If it, Derek, if it's not going to work, it's fine. I'll just ask you to advance. I think it'll be okay.
(Audio cut off).
If I, if I have the computer here, I can advance it myself. (Audio cut off). Really, it's really highly technical. (Audio cut off). Great, thank you. Perfect, wonderful, thank you. Awesome. Okay. All right, everyone.
So while I'm, while I'm speaking, I'll have this on. There are microphones around. We are, just to be cognizant that we're on Zoom tonight, and so for people to be able to hear us, it's helpful, even if we weren't on Zoom, it's helpful to use the microphone. And there is a microphone in the center. Thank you for our first board study session of the year. I'm excited that we're all here. We're going to have, the way this is going to work is we're going to do an overview, and then I'm going to ask you after the overview to just jot down questions you still, that are percolating for you or that you have. And then we're going to go section by section. And when the appropriate section comes up, you can ask your questions in that section, but we'll also have time to discuss in that section. We're hoping that, we have five sections, right? Five sections, yeah. So we're hoping to do no more than 10 minutes of like going through any slides, and then really having 20 minutes of conversation for each section. And then at the end, kind of wrapping up with some, some next steps and some asking a little bit, yeah, for guidance from the board about what you would like to see us do next. So we're excited. I do want to just name that this was a very collaborative effort with the entire executive team and also with our project or program coordinator, Gabe Walter. And so as people are talking, they'll introduce themselves, and you'll get to know us all a little bit better. All right. Any questions about the process tonight? All right, wonderful. So we did read the mission and vision at the beginning of the meeting. I do want to say that after a previous board retreat, there were some updates that we haven't 100% voted on as our new mission and vision. But I did want to ground us in this mission and vision that we talked about again in this conversation, because, and I want to highlight a couple things. I think the first thing I want to highlight is that we use the term "each" and "every." Student is empowered to realize their fullest potential, ready to lead, contribute, and thrive in an ever-changing world through the support of diverse, engaged, and committed community. And I think that "each" and "every," I would like to, if I could, underline several times. And then as we talk about regularly, the Albany Unified School District provides an excellent public education. We do. And it is our mission to empower every student to achieve their fullest potential. Again, every, each and every. We honor the unique ways students learn and are committed to creating inclusive, supportive, and collaborative learning environments by valuing individual strengths, celebrating differences, and fostering critical thinking. We ensure that every student is prepared to contribute to a just and joyful world and thrive as productive members of society. We start there because I want to highlight this notion of rightful belonging. Recently, we went as a, as a group to talk with other districts across the county about special education and budget. It was actually really perfect timing because we, we were all invited together to come together. And I want to say at least 12 different school districts were in the room and in the space. And we started with this idea of rightful, rightful belonging. So I'm going to ask somebody else, not me. If somebody could read the quote in the center, that would be great.
(Audio cut off). There should be a mic on this side, too.
Rightful belonging means every student is seen as an essential part of our community, not because they've earned it, but because it's their right. Dr. Charlotte, Dr. Charlotte Danielson.
So, and, and one of the things, just to kind of highlight there, is that every person deserves dignity, and every family deserves support and respect. So as we discuss special education tonight, I know that we often tend to go towards the what are we not doing well? What are we, you know, how are we fixing a problem? I want to just remind us all that at the core of this are humans, and at the core of this are our students and our families, who deserve that dignity and deserve that support and respect. And so I want to try to keep us away from being very technical tonight, and actually really talking about this from the, from the place of centering our students and our most vulnerable students. And this notion of inclusion, I love this picture. These are our adult transition students doing some work together. I don't know where, but I love it. It might be a Giltrac, actually, which would be really perfect for today, since we're, we're honoring our Indigenous land. And again, if somebody else could read this quote about inclusion.
Inclusion works to the advantage of everyone. We all have things to learn, and we all have something to teach. Ellen Henderson.
I just love this idea that we're learning from each other, and we're all growing together. So tonight's outcomes, we want to understand the current AUSD special education programs, our current budget, and our needs. We want to build an understanding of tiered instruction, and also understand compliance related to that. We want to examine staffing and credentialing issues and challenges, review the key fiscal impact of our, our work, and identify some key challenges and impacts to maybe focus on next. And we will be sharing some suggested next steps. Some of those mine, perhaps? I have a latte, hot latte. Oh, thank you. I'll take it. All right, so overview of special education in AUSD. So before we get into the details, we do want to just ground ourselves in our LCAP. What is our plan? What are we trying to do? This is a pretty great one-pager of the students that we serve, our, our goals, the things that we are really working on, things we're doing well, and areas where we really need to do some work. And as you can see, we have some areas where our students, specifically with disabilities, are highlighted as areas for us to grow in. And I wanted to, I wanted to start there. We also have made some, some growth in different areas. And so, again, as we talk about this today, I want to just continue to remember that this, these are people at the other end of this data and at the under, other end of these numbers. And we want to make sure that as we're talking about this, we're really thinking about how are we making sure that we're supporting each and every student to grow. It's hard for me to read off of there, I apologize. So, special education, this is, this is the law, right? So we have the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, or ID, IDEA, or IDA, there's a lot of different ways to say it. And it is our job, it's our duty for any child between the age of three and 21 to ensure that the students who need those extra special supports are getting them. And we do that through an individualized education plan, or an IEP. There's going to be a lot of acronyms tonight, and I want, please, 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 if we start talking in acronyms, which we know educators can have entire conversations and never use a full word, please stop us and, and tell us, we're doing that, okay? But for the rest of the night, we'll be talking about IEPs. We're not going to keep spelling it out. IEPs are developed by a partnership, and it's so important that it's a partnership. It is developed by parents who, and families who know their children best, and the educators. We used current performance levels, learning needs, and services to figure out what's going to be in that IEP. And it should be reviewed and updated annually, and then every three years, there's also a reassessment to make sure that we're still doing what we should be doing, and also hopefully to maybe pull away some of the supports, because the student doesn't need it as much anymore. So students are assessed through a multi-disciplinary team, and it's a very, very legal and very compliant process, and it is basically a psychoeducational evaluation. Any questions before we move on? Because I think this is probably, if we don't understand this, it's going to be very hard to have the rest of the conversation. All right, great. Another thing about special education is that each and every child is unique, not just our students who receive IEP supports, but each and every child is unique, and each and every child has unique needs. Special education works to put the right supports in place to, for the unique needs of each and every child who qualifies. And there really should be a continuum of services in a district that's doing this really well. So we have the least restrictive environment, which is general education class, which we'll talk about today, which is your core instruction, your tier-one instruction, your tier-two instruction, and your tier-three instruction. And that is the least restrictive. The most restrictive, if you look at this continuum, is a residential or home hospital treatment center. Home instruction is, is very restrictive. And then somewhere in the middle are all the other kinds of supports that, that are available. Tonight, I'm just going to put a, put a, a pin in this. We are going to be talking about things that we believe maybe are missing in our continuum of services in this district that would help us actually to not have to jump all the way to the end of the spectrum, or at the end of the continuum as often, and have those supports in, in our own district. And just a highlight of who we currently, or what services we do provide right now in the continuum. So we have the resource specialist program, which actually we, we are now moving towards what the new acronym is, which is, Brian?
Mild, moderate support needs.
Mild, moderate support needs. So we're going to stop saying RSP, and we're going to start saying MMSN. And we also have our extensive support needs classrooms, which in the past were called special day classes. As you can see, we have ESNs at Ocean View, and Marin, and AMS, and AHS McGregor. We do not have an ESN classroom right now at Cornell, and we have resource or MSSN at all of our classroom, or at all of our schools. And again, there is something in the middle here that we do not offer, that we want to maybe consider and talk about. And then this is a snapshot of who our current students who have been identified with disabilities are, what supports we are providing. Any questions about this slide? Yes? Back one?
What is the rationale of having no ESNs at Cornell?
I would say there isn't necessarily a rationale. I think it's more around a space issue. So it's something to talk about, too. And that, that's my understanding.
We've had, in the past, SDC programs or ESN programs at Cornell, and we've tried to work at trying to consolidate some of our programs so that we're really maximizing the impact. We have moved students originally at Ocean View Elementary, and then we had two classrooms and moved one of the classrooms over to Marin Elementary. And I think some of the ideas that we have is maybe having all of our programs for ESN at one school site. Those are some of the conversations that we're having with our site leaders to see about really, you know, like the maximum impact that we can have for our students, to have a continuum for extensive support needs at one particular site, while we really focus on some other types of programs at other school sites. But facilities is a, is a big piece, on being able to find, you know, a suitable, you know, location for, for a program, especially for our extensive support needs.
Any other questions about our continuum, current continuum? Okay. All right. Now, I, this is a snapshot of the budget. When Chief Business Official Wu goes through this later, we're going to go much deeper. But I did want to just highlight, this is our special education current budget snapshot. And what I really want to highlight on this slide, we'll talk about it again later, is this thing called maintenance of effort. This is something I think that when you have a conversation about special education, and you have a conversation about budget, and you have a conversation about compliance, where it all comes together is this maintenance of effort. Federal law requires that, well, currently, requires districts to maintain or exceed prior-year spending on special education using local or state funds. This means that there's funding stability, and it prevents reductions when federal funds are received. In theory, this is a great, great idea, and we of course want to make sure that we are never not serving the needs of each and every child. But what this also means is that sometimes districts struggle, because you have to keep the MOE at a certain level. And so it's not as simple as saying, well, we're going to think of a new way to do this in a different way, and we're going to cut the costs. It's not that simple. It's actually really complicated and complex. And this is, I think, one of the things, as we talk tonight, we want, we, we always want to keep in mind that we have to maintain or exceed prior-year spending. That doesn't mean that we have to do the exact same services in the same way. We can certainly switch things around and do things maybe more efficiently. And again, we, the goal is least restrictive environment. We want our kids to be really able to access But I did want to just highlight, this is our special education current budget snapshot. And what I really want to highlight on this slide, we'll talk about it again later, is this thing called maintenance of effort. This is something I think that when you have a conversation about special education, and you have a conversation about budget, and you have a conversation about compliance, where it all comes together is this maintenance of effort. Federal law requires that, well, currently, requires districts to maintain or exceed prior year spending on special education using local or state funds. This means that there's funding stability, and it prevents reductions when federal funds are received. In theory, this is a great, great idea. And we, of course, want to make sure that we are never not serving the needs of each and every child. But what this also means is that sometimes districts struggle because you have to keep the MOE at a certain level. And so it's not as simple as saying, we're going to think of a new way to do this in a different way, and we're going to cut the costs. It's not that simple. It's actually really complicated and complex. And this is, I think, one of the things, as we talk tonight, we always want to keep in mind that we have to maintain or exceed prior year spending. That doesn't mean that we have to do the exact same services in the same way. We can certainly switch things around and do things maybe more efficiently. And again, the goal is least restrictive environment. We want our kids to be really able to access their instruction and their needs in the least restrictive experience. Another thing, just to highlight, that we will go back into later, is our current staffing. What you'll notice is that for our staff, this is so uncomfortable. Let me move it. Okay. Sorry. My neck issue is just... So for our current staffing, you'll notice that we have FTE, which is the full-time equivalent positions. And what we budget for, or what we say we might need, might actually not be true because the needs of students can shift. And we might say, we need 11 full-time equivalents, and we actually only need nine. Or it could be the opposite. It could be, we could go up to needing 13 or 14. So that's one issue that we'll be talking about tonight. But the other thing, just to note, is that it's also currently not easy to find special education teachers. And it is also not easy to find some of the other staff that you need to support the related services, like, what would you say is one that's hard? Speech and language is really challenging. What that means is that often, school districts need to work with a contracted agency to find those staff, and those staff work for that agency and not the district, which is very challenging. Because they're not our staff. They're not connected necessarily to our community for long periods of time. And it can create a very bumpy road for our different communities or different school programs. So that's something we're just going to note. This is not, I would say that the extensive support need staff is harder to find traditionally, although I think it's getting more and more difficult across the board. And again, we'll go into this a little bit deeper later. Yeah, that would be great. Thank you. All right. And then, how effectively are we supporting the students in our district? This is just a high-level snapshot, very high level of how we're doing as a district. And I just wanted to highlight that you'll notice that for students with disabilities, there is absolutely certainly disproportionality. We have disproportionality in other areas as well. But it is something to really highlight and note. And that's something we really want to be thinking about. How are we closing that disproportionality? Or how are we eliminating that disproportionality? And this is very specific to our students, based on the California Dashboard, in terms of overall academic and student... Sorry, student... The word is slipping out of my mind. Engagement data, thank you. That's the word. So, chronic absenteeism, suspension rates, you would call that engagement data. And so we want to make sure that our students with disabilities, again, are at least, were at least at the same level as the rest of the district, that there isn't that gap. And we want to make sure that we're seeing growth. And I will say, highlighting chronic absenteeism, that's a great little moment right there for our district. College and career indicators, looking really good. Suspension rate, it's flat. So we're doing some things, but we, of course, want to make sure that we're closing, or we're seeing that change in ELA math and our graduation rate. Okay. So before we move on, I'm going to ask you all to take about five minutes to write down, just like do a stop-and-jot, free-write, all the questions, thoughts, ideas that are going through your mind right now. So that, when we get to the section that it makes the most sense for you, have it already there. And of course, keep doing that throughout the presentation. And if you need for us to stop at any point, please just ask us to stop, and we will. About five minutes to write down things, and I will pass... You guys have a mic... Do you want to use this while you're talking? This is easier to use, actually. Okay. Jot down that last question. Of course, keep writing them throughout the presentation. So how this is going to work is our amazing Ed Services team, who we have Karen Schreiner, our Executive Director of Teaching and Learning, Deborah, our Executive Director of Student Services, Dr. Brian Biggs, our Executive Director of Special Education, and then our Program Coordinator, Gabe Welchert. They are going to be presenting this section. And again, the goal is that we're talking just a little bit, and then we're having a conversation. So we're going to do the best that we can. I am actually going to try and time us, just so you know. Oh, you're already doing it? Wonderful. Karen's better at that, so I'm going to let Karen do that. So I'm going to pass it on to that team. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Superintendent Stone. It's great to be here. Thank you, Board Trustees. You know, multi-tier systems of support is... Oh, I'm sorry. Pre-referral supports, pre-special education supports, and the role of MTSS. We have spoken a lot throughout the years that I've been here about multi-tier systems of support. We talked a lot about the rhetoric, and we've been really working with our teams to move rhetoric into action and thinking through, what are our different tiers of supports that we're responding to various student needs, whether it's academic, behavior, social, emotional? And so, just to start off, is just to talk a little bit about multi-tier systems of support to get grounded and really see the intersectionality with MTSS and special education, and understanding that a lot of the work that we do in special education has an outcome from the work that we do in general education. And the more supports that we're putting in place for our students earlier on, hopefully is giving them the opportunity to be more independent as learners, whether it's a student in general education, reaching their fullest potential, or a student in special education that are working on their IEP goals, to be more independent and reaching their ability levels. So with MTSS, it's a great structure to be thinking about how we're supporting students. There's various different tiers that we'll be going through. It's really grounded on data-driven decision-making. We want to just not think through and throw things on the wall that we think may work, but we want to actually see the data that comes with it so we're making informed decisions to best support students through the various different tiers of intervention supports. And we have some really great structures in place with all our brilliant educators and our parents to really talk through what some different strategies are and different interventions through those different tiers. And we'll be talking about what that looks like. The collaboration is essential. We are stronger together, as we know here in Albany. We come together as a community, and we come together to support our students that may be struggling in various different domains. And the MTSS structure really lends that collaborative approach to really, you know, lift up the difference in knowledge and skills that different educators and families bring. And this is really all based on equity and access. We're really focusing our supports to make sure our students are accessing and working towards grade-level standards, are being safe, included, and making progress. And this is, you know, it's not a one-stop, you know, it's all, it's like, we're always coming back. It's a continuous cycle of improvement. We've heard that before. We want to be able to, you know, put different interventions in place and see how students progress. And if things aren't working, we come back to the team. We tweak, and we put more interventions, different interventions, with the hope that they're going to be able to respond and make progress. So some of the questions that I'd like for the Board, we'd like for the Board to be thinking about during the study session in MTSS is, are we meeting all of our learners' needs across our different tiers? Where do access or resource gaps exist? And how can we strengthen cross-department collaboration?
Thanks, Brian. We're going to talk a little bit around what each of those tiers actually means in action and what we expect to be happening across each tier of support. When we think about tier one, we're thinking about grade-level core instruction that all kids engage in. And we expect that with high-quality instruction, every child makes at least a year's worth of growth in a high-quality learning environment. And so that might mean, you know, your whole-class instruction. But that might also mean, to paint a really specific example from WINTIME this year, which we'll talk a little bit in just a moment, I consulted with a first-grade teacher recently who the majority of her kiddos, coming in from kindergarten, are not forming their letters correctly. And that's really impeding their ability to sound out words and write fluently. So during WINTIME, while some kids are getting more intensive support, she's working with the majority of her class to support some of those kindergarten foundational skills that were not mastered. So that's really still a tier-one level of support. When we think about tier two, if a kiddo's not making expected progress, we want to increase the level of support. And that might occur through dosage, how much time they're getting with a really highly effective educator. That might mean decreasing the size of the group in order to increase the intensity of support. Or that might mean intensifying the curriculum that's being used. So another really specific example of that, actually at that same school, was consulting with one of our brilliant reading interventionists the other day. And she's working with a group of three. And that was actually a preventative support put in place, based on beginning-of-year data. Two of those kiddos are making progress. They're mastering their phonics checks. They've got the letters and sounds with automaticity. One of those kiddos is not. So she's going to be meeting with that child one-on-one for a couple weeks to see if that increased level of support helps move that kiddo along. So that's a really specific example of a tier-two support. That we would expect somewhere between 5% to 20% of kiddos to need, holding our whole landscape of Albany in mind, and thinking of this specific example of our elementary schools. This reflects our current data. About 70% to 80% of our kids are meeting benchmark and core grade-level content. And then, when we think about tier three, we have, the goal and what's expected based on research is somewhere between 1% to 5% of kiddos needing even more intensive support. And that might look through, look like through the special education process, but that might not. That might mean, you know, an example of a kiddo who needs one-on-one support for a longer period of time as part of, you know, an intervention cycle. But that's what our cost process is for. And our UDL, our Universal Design for Learning, that Deb is going to talk about shortly, really helps prevent some of the more intensive supports needing to be put in place in the first place. So I'll let you talk a little bit about that.
Thank you so much. So, Universal Design for Learning is a framework that was developed by CAST, which is the Center for Applied Special Technology. And what UDL asks us to think about, instead of looking at an individual student saying, like, "Okay, what's happening for the student?" Why, you know, it's stepping back and saying, "What's happening for students in this classroom? And how can we remove barriers for their learning?" And so it's really calling on teachers to look at all of their practices. And if you look through the eyes, which is, I'll talk about that in a moment, through like, a student, let's say, who has a hard time with auditory processing and needs the visual aids. The teacher's now integrating in more visual aids, and that student needs that, but all the students benefit. And so it's like, really looking at like, how we teach instruction to all of our students so that students who have particular needs can access it, but that all students are benefiting from that way of, like, integrating in more teaching styles. And one of the things that we did two years ago as a school district was we, following a district retreat that we had led, Jen Gritman, who is a teacher on special assignment, and Michelle Sinclair and I, created a framework for lesson planning related to UDL. And across, it was one of the first initiatives I think we ever had across all of our schools. And it was really cool to see teachers engaging in that, where they would take a lesson, consider particular students who they felt feel like are not accessing their class as well as they would like them to be, change their lesson plan, taking those pieces into account, teach, come back, and discuss. And so I think it's one of those things that we just always, I mean, I think our educators are always thinking about, like, you know, besides, what can I do to like, help support this particular kid? What can I do in the way that I'm teaching all my students to remove barriers and remove obstacles for our students? And it looks at three main categories. It looks at engagement, representation, action, and expression. And those really call on us to understand, what is the teaching standard we're teaching? What is the goal? You know, like, if the goal is that you want your students to be able to understand what photosynthesis is, and your product you're asking them for is to draw a picture of photosynthesis, and maybe drawing is not something that is easy for certain kids, but you don't actually care about the drawing. You just want to make sure they know the process. Could they verbally say it? Could they do, write a paragraph? Could you be flexible about the way that they show it? Because in this case, all you care about is that knowledge. Now, if the standard is that you want them to be able to write a five-paragraph essay, could you be flexible about the topic? You want them to be able to write the essay, but could it be a topic that they really like and are interested in engaging? It could be about skateboarding. It could be about bird watching. It doesn't matter. You want them to be able to... So that's what this does, is it has, you know, teachers really think about, what is the goal, and how can I remove barriers towards students, both learning and expressing their learning of that goal?
Thanks, Deb. So, holding in mind that sort of UDL lens, where we're adjusting how we operate in order to better support kiddos. And actually, Gabe, if you don't mind, can you click back two slides just for a quick moment? I want to just make a connection here. That all of that really important UDL work is part of strong tier-one instruction. And this isn't up on the slide, but I just want to name a piece, since we're really focusing on literacy, especially in our elementary schools this year. What we know from the reading research is that 40% of kids are going to need really explicit and systematic instruction in order to become super-strong readers. So for the majority of kiddos, reading is not natural. It's not a natural process, and it takes really, really focused instruction. It's not a natural process, and it takes really, really focused instruction in order to support kiddos. And so, it's important that our Tier One instruction is really strong. And one of the things that we're working on across our elementary schools right now is to, the beginning of a curriculum adoption process, because the current curriculum we're using is not aligned with the reading research, the Lucy Caukens units of study. And so, that's a process we're going through this year that about 20 of our teachers are really closely involved in with piloting new curricula. And so, I just want to name that because it's really exciting that in the future, we are going to have a curriculum that better supports us to do that important Tier One work down the pike. So I just wanted to name that. If you could click back through, Gabe, thanks so much. So just to ground us in terms of what I need time, or win time, that we're really trying out this year across the entire district as a systematic way to provide targeted support, acceleration, and enhancement for students. And right now, we're trying it in a way where there's a dedicated period of time in a given grade level, where no kiddos are missing any core instruction, because the focus is on personalized learning, the focus is on small-group instruction, and the focus is on acceleration where needed. And one of the things that our principals, hopefully soon our ILT teams, our interventionists are doing, is starting to take a look at progress monitoring data, because we're in the window between beginning of year and middle of year, where we're checking on how much kids have learned and where they still need support. And by looking at that data, they'll be making some adjustments to their win time schedules to reflect what kids in different grade levels need. So yeah, I think we're, we're really trying to hone in on that purpose of providing differentiated instruction, which is really a big part of the MTSS framework, so that all kids get what they need. I tricked you, Brian. I'm very sorry about that. Wanting to make a really explicit connection here to special education, where part of our theory of action around this is if we can provide systematic and targeted preventative support that will hopefully lead to fewer needs for special education referrals, and especially ones that are unqualifying, which ultimately will have an impact of cost savings, we believe.
So, I'm going to talk a little bit about the process, kind of the pre-referral process. And, well, let me, let me just start with, so, let's say you're a teacher, you have a students in your, a student or students in your class who are struggling. And that struggling could be academic, could be social-emotional, could be behavioral, it could be attendance, right? So, struggling doesn't just mean academic, but a student struggling, first the teacher tries to put interventions in place, right? And that's just kind of a, a natural part of, of the work that our teachers do. And those interventions, you know, can just be, hey, I'm noticing that the student seems to not understand the directions, I'm going to go over and I'm going to check with them after I give directions and ask them to repeat them back to me. Or it could be, hey, it seems like when my, when this first creator comes home, they're not sure of what they're supposed to do, I'm going to check in with the family and just make sure they understand kind of what our cycle of, of work at home is. So there's a lot of different types of interventions that can be done. Sometimes there's even like little behavior charts of like, hey, you know, we're going to really focus this week on, you know, when you need something, you're going to raise your hand. And so, we're going to, you know, we're going to do a little in-class behavior chart around that. So there's a lot of different interventions, and the idea is that things take time to change. So, a teacher might try something, it might not work the first time, second time, third time, but, you know, giving it, you know, two weeks to four weeks of a cycle to let it play out and see how that goes. If the concerns keep rising up to the level that there's like, ooh, there's something else going on here, I need to get more, more thought partners in this, let's, let's, let's put our heads together, then what we have is a, a cost team. And each school, they call them different things, all our elementary calls them cost, but they, every school has one. And the cost team does not yet involve parents. Parents are being communicated with by teachers along the way, but this team meeting is an internal school team. You know, and it includes an administrator, it includes the teacher, includes someone in mental health, often someone in the, in the, with the eyes of special education, like a school psychologist. So there are different teams, have different configurations, but it's ideas to get different perspectives and lenses on this. And so, they'll, they review data of particular students, they also look at kind of schoolwide pieces, and are, and kind of put their heads together around like, okay, let's see what's happened. Like, it seems like this student's really struggling with attendance, let's put a plan in place. Who's going to do what? Okay, you're going to, you have a good relationship with the family, you contact the family, you know, this person's going to check in with, with the student, maybe, maybe they have a warm welcome every morning when they come in the office. But they'll put some things in place and again, kind of go through the cycle of trying that. After going through these cycles, again, if the cost team is saying, we're trying these different things, the kid's still really struggling, we have more, we have more serious concerns, we're going to call a student-study team, or a student-success team, depending on what school. And at that SST, that, that's when family participates as well. And it's a collaborative meeting with a well-formed agenda, where, again, looking at data, what's the student's history? A lot, a lot of times, families have really important things to add about, well, oh yeah, well, you know, two years ago, we were coming up with the same challenge, and we tried this. And so, there's a whole kind of discussion around it. And oftentimes, from an SST, there are, again, follow-up, like, okay, we're going to try this new system, we're going to maybe have a check-in, check-out with families in school, there might be, you know, increased communication. But this is also where, if there's going to be a referral for assessment, whether it's for a 504 or an IEP, Special Education Eligibility Determination, that would, that referral would come after going through an SST, because what we're wanting to do is to not over-refer students, right? Sometimes, there are things that can be changed and tweaked that can support a student where they really don't need to have, go through a whole assessment process. And so, we really are, want to do our due diligence to try these different things. And if they do get to the point of needing a 504 or an IEP, and all of these things have been tried, it's so informative, right? What accommodations are needed? This didn't work, but this was really helpful to the student. And then, that would, then, after that eligibility, I'm not going to get into those next steps, but then that moves into a different process, a more legalized, formal process. I'll also say that sometimes we skip steps because it's necessary. Like, if there's a safety concern, we're not going to say, oh, teacher, go ahead and try this for 20 days and make, and see if the class is still, if not feeling safe. No, there's a safety concern, let's go to cost right away, let's put our heads together, let's put something in place immediately. So there are situations that rise to a higher level. Or sometimes a parent might reach out and say, hey, I want my kid assessed for special education. And the school staff will say, okay, let's have an SST meeting so we can all talk and figure out what's happening and whether that makes, that makes sense as a next step or not. But I, but I think what is important is that these systems that are built into our schools really help our staff to be thoughtful, systemic, and to really look at data, which doesn't mean they're not taking into account who this little individual is, but it's, instead of just a feeling like, oh, they're struggling, well, what are they struggling with? What have we tried? Is it working? And if not, then let's get some more eyes on it. Dr. Biggs, I believe you're next.
I think Karen said something earlier about, like, the dosage. And I think it's really important for us to, when we look at this, this slide, like, the coordination of service team is trying to find out that dosage. We don't want to over-serve, because that leads to other implications, learned helplessness, mitigates the whole idea about being independent. So it's about trying to find that sweet spot. So, according to the, the cost team, SST structures through MTSS really helps us calibrate our data and understanding the unique profile of a student's learning profile so that we can make adjustments to best meet them in the least restrictive environment. So I think this is just a really great infographic to kind of look at it. As, as we are in the medical field, you don't want to do too much intervention, go through some lower-level interventions, and we don't want to overdose. Something that we're always thinking about, especially in special education, when we think about least restrictive environment. But also, through coordination of service teams and SST, it's the same idea, is really finding that correct dose for students to be able to be independent in the least restrictive environment and make progress. We've seen this slide before. Special education is not, so special education is many different things. It's a great framework of supporting students, a blueprint, when I think about an IEP for a student, of being able to support them. But special education is not a place. Instead, it's a service and support for individual students. It's for students, it's not for students with learning difficulties. I mean, no, it's for, for students with learning difficulties due to primarily cultural, economic differences. So part of our eligibility determination is ruling out some of these other variables that be, could be contributing to a student's difficulty in school. So we want to really make sure that we're not identifying students for special education due to some of these exclusionary factors. And it's not designed to meet the needs of students who have a temporary physical disability. Going through our assessment process, we have 13 eligibility categories that we're determining if they meet one of the 13, and then determining if they require specialized instruction. It's not just temporary. And this is the connection of special education. I think I mentioned it at the very beginning, so I'm, I'm not going to go into this slide too much. It's everything that Erin and Deb were discussing. It's really making sure that we have a, you know, concerted cogent effort to ensure students are being met within the least restrictive environment, and making sure that as a district and school teams that we're making an appropriate referral for special education. This next slide, I think, is really interesting. We, as Superintendent Stone mentioned, we met with the county, and they provided some updates on some California trends. And we're seeing a lot of different increase in special education referrals for various differences that we may have not seen in the past, such as toileting, behavioral needs, capacity and interest in supporting at-risk early childhood learners, requests for services bypassing the whole structure that we discussed. And in some instances, it's definitely necessary. But in other instances, we need to slow down and really figure out that right dosage of support for students. And also, just the shifts in preschools and transitional kindergarten. We have younger students that are on our school sites, and we're experiencing different learning differences with them. And so, it's about grappling about how we're supporting our students who are coming in at the age of four on a, you know, a school-age campus. And then also, just the continuum of available supports and the lacking of our facilities, as mentioned earlier about some of our facilities, and finding space for, for students with unique circumstances. It can be really difficult. And then, again, arriving at kindergarten, maybe not with some of the learner behaviors and skills ready to actually be in the classroom setting to follow instruction. And so, a lot of the work that, you know, the state, as well as what our district is really trying to work towards, is that universal design of learning, our multi-tier systems of support, and strong inclusive behavioral support for all students, not just in special education, but really unpacking some of those tiered supports within our MTSS for behavior, and what are we doing to support all of our students? And then, early intervention and prevention for all.
All right. Thank you, Ed Services Team. So, now we, we have the opportunity to have a conversation. So this is a good opportunity, if there's questions that you still want answered in this section. And also, just a conversation, what did you hear? What's coming up in terms of your understanding or you're wanting to even know more? That maybe we want to do some further dives when we do board study sessions or discussions at board meetings. And going back to those, can you go back to that slide with the guiding questions at the beginning? If we wanted to kind of think, yeah, so are we meeting our, all of our learners' needs? Where do we have access or resource gaps? And what can we do to strengthen cross-department collaboration? These are, these are three questions that we are thinking about regularly. And so, we want to make sure that we're making decisions and we're thinking about things that are, that are supporting this. But our conversation now is going to be based on your questions.
On the slide, a really complicated one with multiple colors, that talks about cost. Yeah. So, yeah, that, that one. What is the typical timeframe from a teacher identifying a child to getting to either a 504 plan or an IEP? Is there a...
Yeah, I would say it varies so greatly because the referrals are so different. So, you know, like, if a, if a parent reaches out and says, hey, we have an ADHD diagnosis, we really think our kid needs a 504, that's a streamlined process. So we're now moving directly to an SST, we're discussing, this, you know, do, after the meeting, do we, does the parent still feel like that? Do we need to move to a 504 eligibility meeting? So, right, so that's like a pretty quick timeline. But if it's a student who, wow, really seems like they're struggling to get their math facts, and the teacher's like, let me try some different things, I've now tried some things for, you know, like, maybe a month's cycle, and I'm, and I'm seeing some improvement, but I'm still feeling concerned that there might be something else going on, let's move them to a cost process. And then, cost might, through the cost process, I might be like, okay, we're going to have these students during win time, get a little extra help, there might be some other different pieces we put in place. And then, that might be that, right? The kid might be like, oh, wow, they really, like, the new things we tried really worked, were good. Or it might be, oh, nope, there's still some concerns, let's move to an SST. So I think teachers are, you know, are amazing in all of the different ways that they intervene with students. And so, a lot of times, the different things they try really do work, and it never moves to that, that, you know, but other times, there's bigger things happening, and then that kind of, that process gets moved along more quickly. So I think it's kind of responsive to what's happening.
One other related question. If it does start with the teacher and goes to cost, at what point are the parents brought in?
Yeah, I mean, I think our, the best practice is, and I think for the most part, our teachers really work hard to be in close communication with families. And so, I think that there are, you know, there are some safeguards that are already in place, like conference times, you know, with elementary school, there's, you know, parents can check Aries in middle and high school. So there are some of those pieces that are already in place. And then, there's just when a teacher has a really strong concern about a student, they should be reaching out to the family, and most often, that's, you know, what's happening. Yeah, and keeping them in the loop.
Is that on? Yeah. My question was about MTSS and win time specifically. So you described a scenario in a classroom where a teacher's working with a small group of students. We've talked here about a guiding question, are we meeting all learners' needs across tiers? And I'm just curious how that scenario in the classroom looks in terms of kids who maybe need sort of extending input versus kids who need help catching up.
Math intervention and reading intervention, that, that looks different across sites. So I would say there's a caveat in terms of amount of personnel that's really dependent on the site. And I think there's a piece here on grade level, too, where in the, in the land of K2, what we know from the reading research, and again, focusing on literacy, because that's really where, where our priority is, for kiddos who have very, who are at benchmark or even above benchmark in K2, we often see, I don't know if folks experience this as children, that I might be able to read with proficiency, but I might really struggle with spelling. And that's because those two processes are really reciprocal. And so, even when a kiddo in K2 is proficient on paper, when you look at a data snapshot, that's not the be-all, end-all of the story when we're looking at children's formative data. So, I just happened to be in that specific teacher's classroom a couple weeks ago with the principal, and the teacher was trying out a new process where the kids are working with partners to practice their guided spelling. And a lot of the kids were, they were doing a great job behavior-wise, but were struggling with, with the spelling piece, even the kiddos who might be above grade level. And so, I think there's a piece there with the younger kids in particular. And I think what we're seeing some of our site leaders, and we hope our site ILT soon, looking at our upper grade, upper elementary kiddos, and really thinking about, does our current structure of win time match what the needs of our site are? Because to use, I think it was Brian's phrase of a cycle of inquiry or a continuous improvement process, that's what we really want to see happening. So just consulting with a principal the other day, we were looking at their data, and they're planning to make some adjustments to their schedule and saying, oh, actually, this grade can have win time at the same time as this grade, because these kids won't be impacted. So, I think at the beginning of the year, we really tried to put a structure in place, and now it's sort of like, great, we're trying out the structure, it's not the structure forever, let's really pivot and be responsive to the data. Yeah, so, it really depends on the site because of the personnel. And some of that happens in the class, some of it happens in a different physical location, so that piece is really site-specific.
I really appreciated Superintendent Stone, your focus on, I believe it was in the context of IEPs, the partnership with families, caregivers. And I just wanted to ask how well we feel like we're listening to and partnering with caregivers right ask how well we feel like we're listening to and partnering with caregivers right now? Like, how much of a challenge do we find in, for whatever reason, feeling as if there's a disconnect between what caregivers feel is important for their students to have and what we are determining they should have or can have?
Are we talking about through the IEP process, or through just the cost SST?
Don't be limited in your response.
Well, I think what's hard for me, and I can pass it off to my colleagues, and I know in special education, it's an ever-evolving discussion that we have in our department. Part of the IDEA talks about parental participation, and it's a really critical piece into being able to develop an IEP for a student. In my office, I definitely have gotten feedback from families where they did not feel that was the case. And so, when I hear some of the challenges that our families have navigating the IEP process and not feeling that they were contributing members, it's a concern. It's a compliance issue, which we'll talk about a little bit later. I am really surprised to not have having as many parents come knocking on my door.
Knock on wood.
Knock on wood. But I also think, you know, some of the work that our team is doing, it's hard work. It's hard work being a special education teacher, being a case manager where you're holding two hats. And I think a lot of them are doing a really good job. And part of our office is really hearing our parents and then bringing it back to our teams to kind of grapple with, what different structures can we put in place to really support parental engagement through the process? And one of the things that I've noticed is, even before we get into special education, is about what is the education that we're providing our community about these processes leading into special education? We have a lot of parents that make referrals for special education. We honor referrals. We go through that process for special education. We typically like to have an SST meeting to solicit parent feedback and understanding of their referral concerns. But it is an ongoing thing of us really trying to identify what particular staff are having challenges incorporating parental participation, but also educating families about what special education is. Because I do see disparities between what staff understands special education, what families do. And I think if we were to build better structures in pre-referral supports, it'd help kind of close that gap and strengthen some of the communication breakdown that happens that then lands in our office. I'm going to pass that off.
Just wanted to resonate with a lot of things that Dr. Biggs said, and want to just piggyback on one piece, which is that I feel like in our best-case scenario, when we're looking at our children and wanting to do the best we possibly can by them, it is a full, real collaboration between home and school. That's when we can do our best work. And in order for that to happen, there has to be some level of trust, which is not always the case. Sometimes, because trust has been broken in some way, and sometimes because of all of the systems and things that are happening in our world and society, and families come in not trusting. So, that's a piece of like, really wanting to make sure that we do everything we can to be building relationships and building trust. I think that most often, that starts effectively from our teachers, who are with the kids every day and, you know, connecting with families. And then, I do think there's like a two-way education piece. There are sometimes things that parents and caregivers are seeing at home that we're not seeing at school, and that's really important information, right? If sometimes kids hold it together really well at school, and you're like, "Oh, the kid's totally fine," and the parents are like, "Oh, no, no, no. They're coming home, and this is what's happening." And that's really important to know. And at the same time, a lot of times, our families, not all families, but a lot of times, don't know how our schools really operate. What are the supports that are available? What does it mean to have a 504? What does it mean to have an IEP? How can their kid get support outside of those pieces? And I think sometimes, parents come in really with the best intentions to advocate for their kids, but are not asking for the things that really make the most sense. And that's where I feel like that trust comes in, so we can really effectively collaborate. And I think we have an amazing staff who really want the best for our students. And parents are coming and wanting that, too. And so, when we can really connect effectively on that piece and educate each other, I think that's when we really can do our best work. So, I think that's where we're like, really trying to work hard on these processes.
So, as I think everyone knows, this is also deeply personal work for me. Both of my children have IEPs, and I have been the parent on the other end. And even when I was the principal of the school, where I was having the IEP for my child, I felt often like I wasn't really being heard. And part of the reason, I just want to say, and this is my own experience, is because obviously, my child is my most precious, precious thing in the whole world. And I want every single person to see my child the way I see my child. And unfortunately, when you're in a school setting, as I said before, there are the technical pieces and the compliance pieces, and the, we have to go through a process. And what I want as a parent is, can you just help my kid? I'm seeing my kid struggle, and I just want it, I want it better for them. And so, I think what we, back to the conversation about helping train and partner, is also, I think part of it is, we have to have absolutely radical empathy for our community, because those are their most precious, precious things in the whole wide world. And we also have to help people understand what the processes are that we're sort of, that we have to be held to. And also, that, you know what? Sometimes, actually, those extra supports and services are not in the best interest of the child. I want my child to just be okay, but having a one-to-one aide may not be the thing that's going to help my child be okay. What's going to help my child be okay is learning how to do things more on their own and being more independent. This is a consistent conversation. I'm speaking the truth right now. Consistent conversation about resiliency. So, each and every child has those different needs, but as a parent, it is often the most heartbreaking experience. And again, as the person who is leading the school, I was having that heartbreaking experience. So, I'm sitting on the other end of the table. I'm the principal there, and I'm like, "You're not getting it. I need this for my kid." So, I think what we can do is, again, really understand what our parents are working with in terms of the love that they have for their child, and that they're, of course, going to want to fight for that. And helping our parents understand some of the things that we do have to do, just our due diligence. And again, we're really focusing on the least restrictive environment. And sometimes, what we think we want for our kids is actually not always the best option. So, I just wanted to put that out there.
I want to be mindful of time and know that we have a few more, we want to make sure we get to every section. Are there more questions or comments or things we want to talk about in this section?
I have two sets of questions. One set of questions around MTSS and UDL, and a different question around TK. So, I'll start with my MTSS/UDL questions. First of all, how do we know that, how do we know that those MTSS and UDL are being put into action in the classroom? How do we know that they're being done effectively? And how do we know that they're having a positive effect on students? Because I think that's kind of three different questions there. And then, as we look at Slide 18 in particular, which is your, the pyramid, do we have a sense of, in Albany, how those percentages play out in the context of our classrooms? And if so, are they at the right level? Those would be my MTSS/UDL questions, and I'll reserve the right to come back to my TK question.
I think Karen and I will tag-team this one, but I'll just get us started. Yeah, I mean, I think in terms of like, the "how do we know" question, I mean, it's interesting because when we were going through this cycle with UDL, it was really cool. There were a lot of teachers observing other teachers with the lessons they were doing. There was a lot of focus on it. And then, the next piece was for our principals, who supervise and offer support to teachers. And so, I think that's really, in large part, the role of a site leader, that we do a lot of work in professional development at our leadership team, you know, where we support our site leaders. And then, they in turn are working at the sites. And, you know, a lot of times, like even through evaluation process, they'll pick like, "Here's a specific school cycle. We're really focusing on UDL, which falls under this teaching framework. And that's one of the things we're going to be looking at as we go through." And then, just casually, learning walks, going through the different classrooms as they do, being able to give feedback to teachers, offering support where they feel like it's needed. You know, and I will also say like, and, you know, they have a pretty good sense of like, "Oh, wow, it seems like, as we look at data, there's a number of students who are struggling in a particular class. It seems like this teacher really could use some additional support in this particular area. Maybe it's classroom management. Maybe it's another piece." But I think it's about the way we offer professional development, the way we offer support, and then the way the site leaders follow up on that piece. So, that's one piece I would add.
I think to build a little bit around the role that department or grade-level collaboration plays with that as well. This year, so far, I've been invited to a few different collaboration team meetings, and I've also debriefed with principals around just sort of how that structure is going, knowing that our really goal, our goal for that time is get to a place where we're looking at data really regularly, so we can see what the impact is, and then make decisions as a team or a department around what we pivot. And I would say that the implementation there varies across sites. It varies across grades. And definitely, a big focus this year in our leadership learning, so that we can improve that practice.
I do want to add that I think your question is a really good one in terms of how well is our multi-tiered systems of support working. And this year, what we are starting to do that we didn't really have before is a data system where we can do some really good progress monitoring around the assessments that we're giving. We also started this year the DIBELS assessment, which is a reading difficulty screener. And so, Karen can answer, I think, at this point, where we are on this, just based on DIBELS.
Yes. And so, DIBELS is for K5 indicators of early literacy skills, and we're about 70% proficient, so kids at or above benchmark. Last year, when we were using a different assessment system, but relatively comparable, we ended last year at 80%. So, we'll see, we're going to be, we're gathering progress monitoring data right now, with teachers assessing their kiddos or their groups that they're serving in wind time at various frequencies, because the frequency varies based on the level of need of the child. And some of the assessments vary depending on what intervention's being put in place. So, this is a real year of inquiry around trying out the concept of progress monitoring, with the goal over time, as this dovetails with new curriculum adoption next year, having much more common assessments in place, so that we can better answer those really, really important questions and most be really attuned to the kids who have the greatest needs.
Well, I'm going to go back. How should I think about what we're doing and whether or not, like, are we spending 80% to 90% of our time on tier-one instruction? And or do we, like, how should I think about that?
Yeah. I think the slight...
I get the slide. I'm just not like...
Totally.
What does it look like on the ground?
I think the slight reframe is that 80% to 90% of kids are served through strong tier-one instruction. So, like, the most basic level of data, if you were to just look at it at a glance, you would say that we're serving that percentage of kids.
But do we know that for our kids today? Are 80%, I mean, I just heard 70%, so that tells me, I heard 70, what I heard, and you can tell me if I misunderstood. 70% of our kids are where they need to be from a reading perspective. That would indicate that 70% are being served through tier-one instruction, and so, we're actually under-indexed on this. We have more people in tier-two instruction than this would, I mean, that's not a bad thing. I'm just trying to understand like, what's actually happening versus a...
You're thinking about it, I think, the exact right way. My caveat would be, this is beginning-of-year benchmark data, when kids haven't learned the grade-level content yet. So, if I'm a kindergartner, I'm being, so I think part of this is why progress monitoring is really important, so that we can see progress throughout the year.
I'll go to my TA if you want to go.
I would say that this is, when we do our vital signs presentation, we'll go back to looking at levels of data. And so, what we need, for us to really answer that question, well, we need to look at the end of your data, the lagging indicator. We're looking right now at leading indicators, which are, what are we, what do we know about our kids right now, so that we can get them the supports they need right in this moment? At the end of the year, if we saw 70% of our students at proficiency or above, then I would say we are missing the mark. And so, when we look at our CASP data, that's a good way for us to think about that. And that's why it's so important that we have different data that we're looking at, and that's why we need to progress monitor around multiple forms of data regularly, which is something we're going to be able to do better. So, in the future, we'll be able to answer that question, like, here's what we're doing, here's how we're doing. I think UDL will be harder to answer, because UDL is not about, you're not going to see the results through an assessment. You're going to see the results through kids being engaged in school and able to access. And so, the more kids that are engaged, and the fewer kids that are being kind of pushed out of, and I'm not saying we are pushing them out, but getting pushed out because the classroom is hard for them, that's when we would know that UDL is working.
Okay, my TK question. I was, something that Director Biggs said around trends in special ed and TK, and some different roles that have to be played. We have, knowing that special ed is highly variable in terms of cost, right, in terms of different disabilities, different kids, different ages, different needs, does, I'm painting with broad strokes, should I think about that TK, special ed in general, maybe have a higher cost component, given the fact that the needs or that age group and some of the needs from my bodily function and toileting sort of thing are going to be significantly higher? Or is that not a right way for me to think about how TK might impact costs in districts going forward? Again, I'm looking for general things. I'm not talking about specifics, but like, I am trying to, the more general thing I want to get out of this is how I should be thinking about special ed costs as we continue to move forward. And by injecting TK kids into our school district, I'm trying to think about, like, should I be thinking about costs for that grouping maybe slightly higher than we've seen historically? That make sense?
That's a really great question. I think I can do, you know, a deeper dive at the particular students, but I think anecdotally, I am seeing that we have a larger number of parent educator support for the behavioral needs for students that are in the younger grades, and whether that's from an IEP that's developed by the district, or we're also seeing a large number of students who move into the district that already have those pre-existing supports in place. So, when we think about the costs for a student that's in TK, or even kindergarten that comes, that has that level of behavioral support needs, we're seeing that there's a parent educator that may come with that.
When you say move into the district, do you mean as transfer students, or that they move in to their residence in the district?
I look at them as Albany students. And so, like, I haven't disaggregated the data, but the ones that I'm thinking of, the two students that I know that came in with parent educator supports, were actually Albany residents.
All right. What I'm going to ask is, if other questions that were related to this section come up later, go ahead and ask them. But I'd love to move forward. And Karen, you're going to keep track of us, our time? Yes? Okay. So, understanding our legal obligations in special education is really important. And we want to make sure that we're not just focusing on this, as I started today. Each and every person that we're talking about today is a unique individual and deserves dignity and supports. And we do have some very key obligations that we have to focus on from a compliance standpoint. So, I'm going to let Dr. Biggs talk us through with that.
Thank you so much. I'm going to try to go through these slides relatively quicker, so we have an opportunity to speak. But really, we want to ground ourselves on some of the areas of compliance. You know, we talked about child find before, which we'll discuss a little bit, IEP compliance, and also timeline monitoring, procedural safeguards, which are the rights for families under IDEA. And also, we have this other accountability structure from the California Department of Education, where we're in a compliance improvement monitoring targeted to, that we'll discuss. And so, some of the questions that we ask are, what are our greatest compliance risks? How do staffing ratios affect efficiency and equity? And what are the current challenges and impact on students and staff? So, child find is our duty as a district to locate, identify, and assess students with suspected disability. And part of the work that we discuss with MTSS, the cost SST, is really making sure as a district, we're making a referral for an assessment that is really a good referral, not just to assess, to assess. We're here to really say, you know what, we've supported the student through various different internal structures. They're not responding. This is, we need to get more information, so we're going to do this assessment, which takes time. It's 60 days, and it's really invasive, and it takes the student out of the classroom, which can be really beneficial. But a lot of it is, if it's not, then we really should be thinking about some of those tier-two supports for the students. But we do have an obligation as a district, as every district does, to our child find. obligations. The really, it's to confirm a disability, suspected disability. Next slide. And this is just the process, really, as I mentioned before, we want to exhaust our intervention efforts before moving into special education assessments, leveraging cost SST. But whenever we do get into that point of saying, hey, we want to assess a student, as a district, we have 15 days to get out an assessment plan to families after we get consent. That gives us the ability to go out and start assessing students, and it's a comprehensive, multidisciplinary assessment, collecting information from parents, the general education teacher. School psychologist is the driving force, but we may have other providers like speech language pathologists, occupational therapists, that are also part of the assessment based on the student's areas of concern or articulated on the assessment plan. Whenever we're, we have 60 days to do the assessment, so within those 60 days, we're collecting that information, we're putting together a report, and then we're holding a meeting to discuss eligibility determination. Does a student meet one of those 13 eligibility categories? And this is a great slide that shows infographic of that. I also just want to pause, I've been mentioning a lot about, you know, district referrals for special education, but much as Deb was mentioning earlier about whenever a family may come to us with an outside diagnosis, we're holding SST. A parent makes a referral for special education, we do have 15 days to respond. We really try to hold a meeting to kind of understand the concerns, brainstorm solutions. And sometimes we, as the family feels like we can rescind our request for special education, while we put some interventions in place, but other times, we move forward with that assessment. And we go through the same process. This is, this is a lot of the work that I do, is the, our compliance, it's about procedural and substantive compliance. And so really just wanted to uplift this and ground us today of understanding the difference about procedural. So the timelines is a procedural compliance issue. When we don't meet those timelines, that has implications for the district and could have implications that, you know, that cost the district. If we're in a situation where a parent's filing for due process and maybe having to deal with compensatory education. There's also substantive compliance. This is, are we really, do we have the right dosage? Do we really know where the student's needs are? Are we really, you know, understanding that threat of ed benefit, and really understanding the student's needs and putting appropriate supports in place? And so those are really two big governing principles for us in special education. And then there's this other compliance aspect that I just wanted to flag here, and that's the CDE that looks at various different indicators, such as time out of general education, which is LRE, as well as disproportionality for students. This is just a quick overview grid of kind of seeing the intersectionality between procedural compliance and substantive compliance. I'm not going to go through everything, but you'll see some of the different components of the IEP process. Both procedural can also have a substantive component as well. So I mentioned before about the California Department of Education, we have an annual determination letter that comes out that kind of shows where we're falling short with various different compliance issues, such as IEP timelines and also disproportionality. And so you'll see on the, on the grid there, our 2025 CD annual determination shows us, can you move that? Yeah. Shows that we need assistance, and so we are currently holding a compliance improvement monitoring team of various different stakeholders within the district, from site principals, psychologists, teachers, and also our SLPA director, to look at some of our disproportionality, which where we have two different areas. We've override identified students with learning disabilities that also have the Hispanic indicator, and then we also have disproportionate number of students that are race one Asian outside of general education more than 40% of the time. Next slide. Part of what our compliance improvement monitoring team does is we do a root cause analysis of, of, we feel is, are some of the issues that are contributing to disproportionality, and then putting in high leverage intervention supports to mitigate having that disproportionality. And that's a process that we're currently in. We also discuss some of the timeline compliance issues, as you'll see here. We're actually, you know, it's not good to not hold IEPs, but like, out of all of our 379 students this past year, we missed eight annual IEPs, which is a lot better than a lot of other districts, still not good enough, because we really want to get to that zero mark, because our students have a right to have those progress monitoring and the annual review to make sure they're making progress, and if not, putting in different supports so they can make adequate progress on their goals. And then we're also, we had four students who we missed the triennial reevaluation form. Now, I will say on the background, this is also, some contributing factors is the, some, some of our staff members were contractors, there were some turnover this past year, so that also leads into missing some of our timelines for our students with IEPs. And then there's another indicator there, and that's when students are 16 years old, we develop individual transition plans, thinking about career awareness, or, you know, college, career, and also independent living. And so some of our students didn't have those ITPs correctly fleshed out on their IEPs, and we've been working with our, with our case managers for corrective action on those to make sure our students have that. And then this is just the snapshot of our disproportionality that I discussed before and our compliance improvement monitoring team that we're working on grappling with this and thinking through high leverage supports, interventions that we can do to mitigate having the disproportionality. But it's really important for us as a district, I just want to call attention, is we're currently in target level two. If we get into target level three, we're at a place of, we got to be really careful because we can get into SIGDIS. And that's a point in time when the state would come in and actually require us to spend 15% of special education monies in general education, which means, as we know, general, special education's already encroaching on the general fund, so that money's not coming from, it's coming from the general fund, and we're having to come up with 15% extra monies to work through some of the systemic barriers that are contributing to the disproportionality. I'm pretty optimistic that the work that our SIM team is going to be doing, as they have done in the past, is going to be able to help break down some of the barriers and get to a place where we're not going to be in target level three and not get into SIGDIS. But it is something that we need to be really mindful of and thinking about some of the structures we do in general education that influence special education.
What time of year is that evaluation, the annual determination? When does that take place?
So we get it at the beginning of the school year, and we had till, I think, middle of October to do our first compliance improvement monitoring team. And then in November, we have to come back with some refined, high leverage activities. And then they'll be reviewing data within the spring to make that determination if we're going into target level three or not. Also, wanted to just, you know, uplift some of the, the high level cost of our students in out of district placements. We've seen this before, and this is just an update, but I wanted to kind of give a span over time, you know, 2018, 2019 to present day. Currently, we have 15 students that are in non-public and residential facilities, and that only shows a picture, it doesn't show the exact picture of the students that have moved down from residential facilities into a lower level restriction of a non-public school, which means at a lower cost. And this is just a snapshot of our contracts for non-public and residential facilities over the past three years, and you'll see that there's amendments and there's things that have been reduced as well because our students are, you know, ever growing, and we sometimes, you know, pivot to a lower level restriction that we're always looking for. And you can just see the cost increase over the past three years with our contracts, but also the amendments and the actual expenditures. It is wrong. We'll, we'll thank you so much. Yeah, we'll make that, we'll make that change. Oh, oh, no. Oh, no. You know, I'm so sorry, you know, Gabe reminded me, these are actual expenditures to date. So to date, the bottom right, we've only spent, we've only spent, we've spent $300,000. It's gonna- That's exactly correct. Unless- I really appreciate what Superintendent Stone said earlier about how we can do things differently. And I think, you know, we've mentioned, we talked about it at a board meeting in January, about really building out our continuum of support services and really allocating monies within-house versus always having to have students go out of placement, because there's a huge benefit for having our students in our school programs, not just for us in dealing with the monies, but also focusing on our students who deserve to be in our schools. Thank you, Gabe. Do you want to speak to this? Oh. I think this is, you know, I think this is a huge, huge win for our district and the work that has been done primarily by our program coordinator, Welcher, since he's been on. And when we look at the number of students that were in non-public schools and residentials, and the work that he's done to bring students home into a lower level of supports, which comes at a huge cost to us. And so we had 14 students in March that were in out of district placements, students did graduate, and then we also had students that moved into the district, so we can't really prepare for that, but when students move in and they have non-public school placement, we're having to follow it. But a lot of the work is going to building the relationships with the families and building the relationships with the vendors or the contract agencies, the non-public schools, so that we're really focusing on bringing the students back home or at least into a program closer to home at a lower cost. I wanted to also talk about, you know, when we talk about compliance, there's, there's different avenues for districts and families to follow in order, whenever there's disagreement. First and foremost, we want to be able to, you know, at the IEP table, you know, work through disagreements, but at times, that doesn't always happen. There's differences of opinion, there's various challenges that have occurred even prior to coming to the IEP table that families have experienced. And so sometimes, if we're not able to resolve, we have different pathways through alternative dispute resolution and having facilitated IEPs. Parents in districts can also work with the state through the Office of Administrative Hearing and have a mediation only, where we have a third-party individual that hears both sides, the parent, the districts, and hopefully being able to come to a compromise, which may result in an agreement, which is a settlement agreement, before moving into something that's a little bit more restrictive, such as due process, which would follow the same kind of, you know, lines of going through mediation, but also with the pending due process dates, which would result in a judge making decision versus parents and districts being able to work together to come to an agreement. And then there's also state complaints, a lot of it's arrested in procedural compliance, so I'm missing those deadlines, then we have to do corrective actions. You know, we, this is just a snapshot of our current alternative placement cost over the past three years, and some of this may be associated with not being able to find a placement for a student through an accredited, non-public school. And some of it may be due to, you know, compliance issues, but you can see the overview of number of students or number of agreements, as well as the costs associated with that.
Right, so that's the compliance section, obligations. Good opportunity for questions, but also conversation. I have 10 minutes on the timer. If we need to move beyond that, we can, but I do want to just name that the two big sections, the meaty sections that are coming up after this are hiring and staffing, and then also our budget, which we really want to get to. But if there are, you know, questions that are coming up around compliance and our obligations, this is a good opportunity to dig in a little bit.
So I have a question about the, the target level three that could happen in November. You seem very calm about that. That seems very alarming to me. Have we been in this situation before in Albany?
Yeah, so last year, we have. Since I've been in the district since 2021, we were, we were under target level two for students race one Asian outside of general education more than 40% of the time. We were able to move out of target level two, and we had a new compliance indicator of being disproportionate for students with disabilities that were specific language and African-American. And we actually, we got out of target level two for that as well, and this is just our new indicators. I'm hopeful, given our risk ratio, so if you look at the numbers, like, we're within, still within the 3% range. So like, we have a small number of students that really contribute to the disproportionality. And so that gives us a lot of leverage to be able to put in different supports to mitigate students being referred in for special education and being identified, making sure that we're, ensuring that we're assessing students in their native language. So for the, for students with disabilities that are Hispanic, I feel pretty confident, as well as for thinking about systems of support to increase inclusive supports for our students that are in more self-contained programs, that are race one Asian, that have been outside of general education more than 40%. We're really looking at it for all of our students, not just that target population, but really, how do we build better support structures? Win is a great way for us to find that leverage, finding time for specials is a really great time as well. And I also think that, you know, we've, as a district, have made some changes within our, with our instructional days that are going to help us really find those opportunities to have students being more with their same age peers, and I think it's going to help not being, to getting out of target level two.
Thank you. I have one other question. It's a little bit related to a previous section, but we talked about reducing students, right, from the higher need out of placement to lower need and saving money. But this MOE concept that was raised earlier, how does that work? If we, if we saved $300,000 by bringing people in-house, does it help us in the end? I mean, obviously, that helps us, but that money still has to be spent. Is that correct? Did I understand that MOE section correctly? Sorry if that's a trick question.
That's my understanding as well, and so it's redistribution of the resources for students within the district versus-
Within the district or with, with special ed?
I think what's tricky is, so if we reduce, like, for instance, there is the possibility, it depends on what the needs of the child are, right? There is the possibility to exit out of services. If you exit out of services, that, the MOE, it doesn't, it doesn't apply to that. So if you do a reduction of the need, and again, I want to be very careful that we're not trying to save money, what we're trying to do is be more effective and efficient with what we're doing. But part of that is from a kind of a civil rights perspective, that students really do need the least restrictive environment to be successful. I always used to say, you know, as, as a grown-up, do you want somebody walking around and helping you do everything? I mean, yes, if you absolutely, absolutely need that, of course, but we often have kids that don't need that, and that, we don't want to give that service to students that can be more independent. So with the, this is why the MOE is so challenging, because if we have a, you know, a ballooning special education cost, and we're actually trying to be more effective with what we're doing, we do have to be careful, because we still may have the same number of students who have IEPs. And so we don't want to like, we don't want to just pull services away. We want to make sure the kids are getting the service they need, but we have to use our assessment data, and we have to really think about how are we ensuring that those students are in the least restrictive environment, and what supports do they not need anymore? And then goes to the redistribution, because we're still going to have kids who need the supports and services.
I, you know, the MOE stuff better than I, but I assume it's a per-student basis, so as your student population changes, keeping in mind that. And the other thing I think is, I think inflation for better forces your friend on this one, where your cost of services are going to go up regardless. So you're, you're, it's really, I think we should be thinking about it more as a percentage basis than an absolute dollar amount. And I think the MOE is on a dollar amount basis, so that's the other, unless we go to a highly deflationary period, we're going to be all right.
Just talking about the costs really quickly and about, about inflation, because that was my, I mean, my question just while we were on that bit. On this slide that talked about the alternative placement cost due to dispute resolutions, this year, it looked like there were eight agreements, which is fewer than there were two school years ago, but we're spending 50% more, so we're fewer, fewer agreements, 50% increase. Is that just because- Is that just because everything's gone up in cost? Or is that because kids need different end results from the resolution? Or both of those things? Yeah.
Both. Cost of living adjustment, but also the unique circumstances of the particular cases that may necessitate a private school that's out of district, out of the state, that comes at a very high cost.
Can I ask a question too? Because this will help, this will help my own understanding. Great. Because you asked such a good question, and I want to check my understanding of this with, like, a practical example. So, hypothetically, if five of the children who are currently at alternative placements returned to the district because whatever program that comes to be now meets their needs, the cost of the out-of-district placement, we would be able to use that saved money to be able to do something differently. Because before, it was, everyone's nodding, so I'm going to stop talking and I'm understanding it. I didn't finish my thought, but I think we all got it. Excellent.
I will say one other thing. So, we have a couple of different private schools in the area. One in particular, who is, just went through a CDE accreditation process. Some students that may be at a private school, it's going to be moving from an agreement into a district placement, which the benefit is, we collect ADA when a student's at a non-public school. I just wanted to bring that up.
It's not a question. But I just want to say, like, just to add to, like, the maintenance of effort question. If, for some reason, like, the students no longer need the service and the funds are redistributed, and for whatever reason, the maintenance of effort actually looks like it went down, there's a whole new series of, like, requirements that you have to follow to justify actually why it went down and we're no longer meeting the minimum. So, I just wanted to share that. In my experience, I've never seen that happen.
I do, I do think, though, that what we want to look at, again, if we're thinking about pre-referral and we're thinking about supports and interventions, one of the things, if you, you don't need to go all the way back. But, but we have a lot of students who are qualifying for speech and language. There is the opportunity to do pre-referral speech and language supports, so that if you get, if you, if you get the kids young enough and early enough and they can focus on pragmatics and articulation, they actually may not need to even enter into special education, and yet, they're already getting their needs met and they're being supported in that same way. So, that's some, you know, some, some of the things, like, if we did have an issue with the MOE, that would be something we could say, hey, we're actually trying to do things prior, before. So, for instance, recently, we received another grant for TK, PK, pre-referral supports. And we are wanting to invest in a speech and language pathologist to support with that, so that before kids even have an IEP, or before we even have that conversation, we're getting them the support.
Can I do just a very quick piggyback on that? This is also why, I'm so sorry, the curriculum adoption process in that land of elementary is so important. Right now, we're using something like nine different phonics curricula across our three sites. And when you have a really strong and focused phonics curricula, big part of that work in kindergarten is teaching all kids how to do things like form the sounds in their mouth, which, from a very tier-one appropriate grade-level perspective, so that it doesn't need to become necessarily a speech and language referral.
Any other questions for this section? Or thoughts, things that are percolating? Okay. I'm going to make a, I'm going to propose that we take a five-minute bio break and that we come back and do hiring, staffing, and budget after that. And I think we'll be able to do that within the hour, so, all right. All right. I thought there was another microphone. Okay. Welcome back, everybody. So, we're going to continue on. We have our chief of human resources, Marina Gonzalez, who's going to talk kind of quickly through hiring and staffing. We've sort of already named some of the concerns, but we just wanted to put a, put a pin or a exclamation point in it right here before we get into the budget.
How close? Thank you. Okay. So, if you've reviewed the slides, you know that there's nothing new. You've heard all the things, right? There are shortages, not just in certificated staff who have Ed Specialist credentials, but just teachers in general. And it's not just us, and it's not just the state, it's the nation. So, that is one of the major challenges that we face constantly. Which then, especially because these are required services, leads to our reliance on contracted services. And you saw earlier, oh, I had it bookmarked. You saw the slide earlier showing that there are, almost always, there are positions that we have to contract for. Some of them, like these ones that you see down here, the point twos, those are because we, we just don't have a need for a full-time teacher there. And so, it's going to be really hard to find somebody to fill that. Or, as an example, the LVN nurse, because that might be a very, that might be a limited-term thing that we're needing. But almost always, we are ending up with a contracted MSN teacher and ESN teacher. I'm not going to be able to say it. Kind of practice. And then, of course, just, so then, that leads to ongoing recruitment and retention challenges. And then you see the impact here, increased fiscal pressure and disruption of services for students. Maybe, do I want to say it here, or will I go on to the next slide? Which are, all right, how can we attract, retain, and grow qualified staff? How do we reduce contract dependence? What partnerships can strengthen our pipeline? And we'll talk a little bit about that in a second. What I wanted to say, and I don't know if there's a bullet coming up on this, as it relates to trying to get staff, in addition to there being less folks going into the profession, we often then are ending up, like, we're going, we're going deep into our recruitment efforts. So, we're hiring folks that may not have a full credential. They're still in a program. So, they are coming to us underprepared and very inexperienced, which can be very challenging, because this is a very important role. And there's a lot of compliance. There's a lot of, you know, every student has different needs, and it can be very challenging for a person in that role. Okay. So, hiring and staffing challenges. Again, there's increasing number of students requiring IEPs. So, there's an increase in that population, but not as many teachers, right? Again, staffing shortages, fewer, fewer folks going into the profession overall. And then, of course, we're competing with everybody else. Everybody else has this issue as well. So, those are some of the challenges that we are facing. And then, again, the retention issues, what I just spoke to a little bit, the case load management, the compliance demands, paperwork burden. And then, there's an emotional and physical strain. There's a lot. And then, of course, it leads to an impact on students. Again, if we're unable to retain qualified staff in these roles, there's going to be the disruption, and it's going to impact students.
This is just an updated snapshot of districts within our Sopa and the ratios of students within their district and different special education staffing. And so, you can see with Albany, for the 24-25 school year, where we lied, where we were at with regards to our teachers, our paraprofessionals, our speech pathologists, OTs, and school psychologists in comparison to other districts. Now, just taking consideration, a lot of this is based on how districts operate within their contract with their bargaining teams. And so, there's different ratios, differences that create some of the higher number of certain staff. There's also programmatic differences as well, as far as how different districts within our Sopa run special education programs. For instance, Berkeley is a full-inclusion district. They don't have the self-contained ESN programs like we have in our other districts within the Sopa. I just wanted to provide that snapshot. And I think one of the things that, you know, I feel as a director of special education, a lot of the time and energy that I've spent is sitting next to my colleague Marina Gonzalez, because we're dealing with trying to recruit and put together plans of retaining staff. The recruitment is really, really hard, because there isn't a pool out there, as Marina mentioned. And so, having to then go through the dance of looking at different contract agencies and, and having to hopefully have somebody that is a great candidate and invest time in them with our existing staff, from our program specialist, our program coordinator, our behaviorist, our school psychologist, and then they're only with us for a year. It's a really draining process, having to find staff and having to work with agencies to secure those staff. Because whenever we post an EdJoin, we're not getting people really, you know, to fill these positions. And it's not just Albany. It's our surrounding district and the Greater Bay Area and the state. We're having a hard time with these hard-to-fill positions. But it's a lot of work that Marina and I do, and then also her team, and then also my office team, Suk, who's our special service technician who manages the contracts. And those contracts, I know you, everyone has seen them come to the board. Wow, we started the year with a $75,000 contract for a school, LVN for a student. And then, a month later, we have a $200,000 increase amendment because it's where we were able to find a provider that, for a speech and language pathologist that we had not been able to find before. And it just so happened to be through an agency that we already had an existing contract. We really do try to put on the board backups, as well as in our budget codes, you know, where, you know, the justification for some of those amendments and those contracts. But that's why you'll see some of those amendments that are pretty significantly different, because we had, at the start of the year, hey, we know we have this need for an LVN. And then, we started the year knowing we needed a speech and language pathologist, but we didn't know it was going to come through a contract agency. And we didn't know it was going to go through that same contract agency that we already had board approval for a master contract for just an LVN. So, you know, a lot of the work is the two of us working with each other, and then also our office, offices working to manage those contracts. And then, talking with each other about what are some of the ways we can really increase supporting recruitment of individuals. Some of the work, I think, that Marina's office has done, as she mentioned, is investing in some staff members who want to become special educators. And we go through that process with the county of being able to get them their short-term permit, and then really working and saturating them with as much support as we can and trying to get them to join a program and really invest, not just in their own professional development, but invest being an Albany employee. And we've had some really great successes through, over the years. I'd like to see some more successes as well. But we have some- But we have some really great individuals out there that may already work for the district as paraprofessionals. There may be individuals who are in the community who have reached out, and I shouldn't say may, they have reached out. And they are starting to work with us. And we're investing in time and energy to give them the support they need, and also helping them navigate nuances of the CTC, you know, the credentialing body, and also ACOE.
The one thing I want to say about the contracted agencies that we, people may not know, is that part of the contract, there can be a clause that says that we cannot poach the person. And if we do, then we have to pay a finder's fee. I was recently told that there is a way for us to work those contracts out that takes that part out. Because I will say, I don't know if folks who end up working at contracted agencies 100% understand that they're not getting the full benefits that we offer. We have a compensation package that includes benefits, not just for the person, but also for the whole family. And a lot of these contracted agencies do not give the same level of benefits. The other thing is, they're not paying into STIRS. They're not paying into their state teacher retirement. And so I don't know why the contracted agencies are so good at finding people, but they are. And I think that one of the things that Alameda County Office of Ed is interested in supporting us with is doing a little bit more of that support of districts so that we can get some of those really high-quality people who end up working for contracted agencies actually to just come work for us.
Can I ask a quick question just before we go on? So I just did some quick calculating of like ratios. Oh, probably. Oh, okay. Sorry, I'm looking this way. So I was just curious, is it as simple as, so, for example, it looks like we have a low, so we have one special education teacher, FTE, per 20.5. And then all the other districts are between 12 and 14. So you're talking about recruitment and how hard it is. I mean, is it as simple as looking at it like that? And I did the same for the paraprofessionals. And I mean, we're more average, but...
I did the total, total FTEs across the board.
Yeah.
Divided by the number of disabilities.
But we're still...
417%, Piedmont to 26, Berkeley to 22, Alameda to 21, and we go to 22.
Yeah.
Much higher, much higher.
Right. Yeah, so I'm just curious of, if, like, yeah, we just talked about the compensation piece, and I'm just... Can I ask a just a...
I think what isn't here is the type of program. And so we also want to look at that. Because depending on if it's an MSN versus an ESN teacher, you're going to see different ratios. And so it would be important to look at that program also in terms of teacher-to-student ratio. And as Brian said, I just want to highlight that the contracts are different in different districts. So there's also that part.
That's what I was wondering, whether it was as simple as just...
I think, I think I want to add something. I was talking to Superintendent Stone the other day, and I just wanted to, you know, make sure that we, we forgot to add a slide to show you what kinds of programs these other districts have versus what we have. So you'll, I came from a previous district from, within the SELPA, and we have way more continuing services and supports than what Albany has to offer for our, our students.
So just to make sure I'm understanding you correctly, one way to think about this is, while we have fewer teachers per student with disability in our ratio, that may be the cause of why we're sending more kids out of district. Is that the right way to think about it?
Yes. And what I would say is, a couple of the services that are in other districts that we do not have, counseling-enriched classroom environment, and something, I hate this term, and I know there's probably a better one, but a tweener program, which is somewhere between the resource and the ESN classroom. And it's for students who might need more supports than a resource can provide, but way fewer supports than an ESN class provides.
Okay, and I just wanted to make, add one more comment on the slide that Brian just talked about, about the contracted, contracted agency hires, that it puts a diff, it puts an added layer of pressure on the special ed department, because they become kind of like a mini HR. They're having to do these interviews constantly with the, with the contracted teachers. Then they are watching the contract, doing the billing. Did the person show up? Who does that person report to? There's just this added layer of work that they are, have to be responsible for. But HR can't do it either. So improvement strategies, I think this, again, this is stuff that you've heard either from us or just out in, you know, the rest of the education world, which is this continued partnerships with universities, trying to grow our own paras into teachers. We're trying to get one right now. She's great. And then mentorship and onboarding improvements. And here's where I think about if we had, if we were sending fewer kids out of the district, if we could pull those resources in, could we then have smaller, you know, caseloads? Could we then have different services so that people feel more supported within the special ed department district-wide? And I will say that recruitment is going to, I think is going to get even tougher. There's just a new Assembly Bill 560 that I didn't even have a chance to put it in here, that just passed, that is asking districts to consider their ratios of adults to students, their caseloads, asking them to distribute initial assessments equally. And then, by July 1st, 2027, the Superintendent of Schools is supposed to distribute recommendations for these staffing ratios. So it could add more requirement on districts to hire more staff that aren't out there. So we're going to see it get tougher and tougher, is what I would say, not to be all doom and gloom, but...
All right, other questions for this section, or thoughts? Things to think about?
So, I don't quite grok the macroeconomic situation with, these people exist. They prefer to go through an intermediary as opposed to work through, like, it's not really a supply and demand problem. There's an intermediary that's, that's... What's, what's, like, what's driving that? Like, I don't have a good sense of, like, why? What's the use case for it, that they are, they would prefer an intermediary as opposed to working directly with the district? Does that make sense, like a best, like?
I think there's two things that I've heard from different contractors over the years. One, they get, you know, higher pay. Now, they don't have the same level of benefits, and not putting in a retirement. But they get a, they get a paycheck.
Probably similar or a few, or lower compensation, but higher, a different balance.
And then the other, the other one is flexibility. They like to have the ability to be flexible and move around and not being tied to a district. So those are the two things.
And what drives that latter part? I mean, I like, I appreciate, I appreciate flexibility, but it's like, it's, is the, is the work different? Or is it they are afraid of getting stuck in a situation that they don't want? And why is that different in other areas of education? Does that make sense?
So I have some, some contractors who, they'll do a stint in Northern California, and then they'll go up to Washington, because they want to try something different. And it's just their, their preference. And it's having the flexibility of being able to move around. And I think for them, it's not feeling like they're tied to a district. They're tied to a contract.
I was just going to say really quickly, maybe you were going to say the same thing. I think also, they don't have to stay in the contract for the whole year. They're, they're working with the contract agency. And so they can go, and then the contract agency gives us somebody else, which also leads to some of the up and down, and not, not that consistency for kids, which we need. We need kids to have that consistency.
So I was going to say that. Because if you're with a school district and you've agreed to the contract, and you break your contract, we can report you to the Commission on Teacher Credentialing, and you might have your credential suspended for a period of time. So that's one. And two, just going back to the, you're getting the higher compensation. If you are hired by, well, if you're hired...
I said higher, it's higher salary.
Salary, sorry.
It's probably not higher compensation. It's probably higher, it might be higher salary, but...
Higher salary is a huge chunk for folks. And then, one thing I notice is that ever since the Affordable Care Act, and there was more access to health benefits for folks, they can, they're like, I don't need your benefits. I can either go to the ACA, or my spouse has them, that sort of thing.
Yeah, healthcare. Kidding, kidding, seriously. And then, what's, I'll ask the question that I'm sure we can't answer, but I'll ask it anyway. What, what's our confidence, or what's the ability of the county to take a more active role in managing us at a larger level? None? You're shaking your head, that's why I'm like, none.
I would say that it's hard to answer that question. I think that there is a desire to support. I think our county has done some really, really interesting and new and innovative things under Superintendent Castro. And so one of the things that they have been able to do is around hiring a paraprofessionals, which hasn't really been our issue. It's been other districts' issues. So I don't know how well they'll be able to do in terms of the contract agencies themselves, but I do know that they're willing to do some advocacy at the state level to help school districts, because we're not the only school district that's dealing with this. It's very much an issue across.
Yeah, and I was thinking of, like, what if the county acted as the contractor? And the agency, right? Because that would give...
What a good idea. Let me bring that up. That's a great idea.
Totally, okay, yes, it's on. I'm just like, how do I know? There's no light or anything. I had a question around retention, considering how difficult it is to bring on new professionals in general, but specifically in this space. So is there a way that we think about this differently than we have in the past to be, you know, sort of more thinking outside the box with the things that we can change and have control over, not necessarily tied to money, for instance? But just wanted to hear about that a bit.
Yeah, but also when I think about the folks that have left, most have left, like, more recently, because they've moved away. And they're priced out of this area, or they have some family issue. We, the folks that are here have been here for quite a while. And so if I were being honest with myself, I'm not creative enough right now to think about how to retain newer folks if they're just choosing to leave. Or, or, or sometimes it's not a good fit.
I will just add, though, as far... Good, thank you. I will just add, you know, in our office, we do have two program specialists. We spend a considerable amount of time focusing on new staff in special education, and really helping them with onboarding, and then also leveraging the support from our existing staff. So for instance, we have somebody that's in the pipeline right now to start our extensive Support Needs Class at Oceanview. And we're putting together a transition support plan over the first couple of weeks to be able to help them transition into their new role with different staff from our office, and also colleagues throughout the district to help them.
I think also, some of the things I've heard, not specifically for teachers in our district yet, but I'm imagining this, this might be a thing. It kind of goes back to what I was talking about in terms of the partnership, or the question you asked before around the partnership with the families. I think all teaching is deeply, deeply personal and very emotional work. And I would say that it's definitely heightened when you're working in the special education programs. And I think that partnership and that, the, the kind of having the empathy both ways, where the, the teacher has that empathy for the family, and the family also understands the impact on the teacher, is going to be something I think we need to, as a district, really talk about and improve. And I'm not just saying we, this district alone. This is, this is everywhere. I think, too, we have to think a little bit about the burnout of the position, because you're, not only are you providing the services and supports to the students, but there is a ton of paperwork, back to the compliance pieces. And sometimes, staff just burn out of the, the part of that, of being a special education teacher, provider. And so when we think about that, I think what we really need to do is have more conversations with our current staff and ask them. And we have been, I mean, we've been starting to talk through, and I think we, we have some ideas. But what is it that is working for you? And what supports would help you? Not, not more people in the room, because that's not the, that's not necessarily the thing. But what are the things that, maybe the efficiencies, or the systems, or even just the, like, having a coaching? Having a person that you can cry on their shoulder for a minute sometimes really helps. And I think that's not just for special education. I think that's for everybody. But those are the questions that we need to ask. Other questions in this section? I think we really want to get to the financial. Okay, Linda, take it away. Sorry, that was not a very good introduction. Chief Business Official Linda Wu is going to help us understand our fiscal impact.
Gladly obliged. All right, so what we're really going to cover is to give you a super-high-level overview of, like, how much the state of California actually invests in special education programming. Then we'll kind of take a quick look at actually how that fares out in comparison to the county level, and then we'll take a deeper dive into our own school district. With that said, I want to put out there that, and I Googled it to just fact-check myself, is that nationwide, basically, special education programming is grossly underfunded. And for the most part, the guarantee is to really just make sure that there's a minimum of 40% of what they estimate the programmatic cost would be, which leaves districts with trying to figure out how do we make up for the difference. So with that said, oh, yes.
Just tell, just tell game.
Okay, okay, thank you, appreciate it. So with that said, you have a quick summary of the California trends ahead of you. They provide it up to 2023. Couldn't get anything more current for the time being. But you can see that, you know, they, it's, the change from prior year is relatively flat, right? It's roughly about 10%. I want to draw your attention, though, down to the number of students with disability is actually climbing year over year. And the most recent year that they display here in 2023 is actually 15%. So if their spending is flat, but the needs of the students is growing, how do we make sure we're able to support that? So it's more or less doing more with less. In terms of the Alameda County trends, there's all the Alameda County school districts on here. I want to draw your attention to the second column that has our school district. And it shows the, the changes in terms of special education student costs from 2018-19, which I consider pre-pandemic levels, to post-pandemic levels. And you could see that every school district has climbed significantly. Our school district grew 23%. Berkeley Unified, which is also in our SELPA, theirs grew to 43%. So that really stands out, in addition to, it looks like Pleasanton Unified. But for the most part, this is illustrating that all school districts are dealing with the same thing of increasing costs. As we compare ourselves to our own SELPA, this is data that was provided...
Can I just interject? Do, does everyone know what a SELPA is? I just want to make sure. Maybe, just for the audience out in the world, Brian, do you want to explain what a SELPA is?
SELPA is a special education local plan area. And we are part of the North Region SELPA that's comprised of Albany, Emory, Piedmont, Berkeley, and Alameda. And what that does is, we have a SELPA director who really provides us guidance from the state to help us with ensuring our compliance components, both, you know, at the student level, as well as on the state level. Because a lot of our data, well, all of our data goes to the state for being able to...
goes to the state for being able to collect monies, and also to oversee the compliance improvement indicators that were recently discussed. And a lot of the work that we do within the SELPA is thinking about system-wide supports, and we also leverage one another for different placements for students prior to going to a non-public school. We look within our SELPA continuum, if there's a program within a different school district within the five school, other four districts, we want to start there. We have, it's, it used to be a much greater continuum prior to the pandemic of being able to place students, and we'd actually, in Albany, had a lot of students from different districts that we'd house, which is a benefit for us to support students, but also, we do get revenue from SELPA placements. And so, right now, we have one student from one of the five districts within the SELPA that we're serving. But a lot of it is the support to the directors to understand what's coming down from the state, so then we can then work with our districts and staff to be on point.
Thank you for that. And one call-out I want to make from this slide is, on the very far right, the last column on the right, you can see that Albany's percent of general population, the special ed students in comparison is 10%, and is relatively lower than our, even within our own SELPA districts.
Do you have a question?
So, yes.
Why? It's not like something I've been looking at, like, we are leaning lower, are we, and it's about these questions, I mean, are we under-identified, or is something else happening? I should think about why I require a person to identify, because I'm just confused, delay Brian, excuse me, number right there.
Yeah, I'm trying to find, I thought we had it in the appendix, there is in the appendix. Yeah, because it, yeah, it's in the appendix. There's, in the appendix, there's a snapshot over, you know, multiple years through, with all the different county districts. And it does show, you know-
Slide 68. Slide 68.
Albany has pretty much been a flat line of around eight to nine percent over the years. That's actually a good place to be. I mean, we don't want to over-identify students, but to your question is, do you feel like, I'm sorry, what's your question?
Yeah, like, why are we bucking the, so, I don't know what the right number is. We're lower than everybody else in our SELPA. To your point, if I look at slide 68, we're kind of lower than almost everybody on the page. Like, what drives that? I got, it's almost just more of a curiosity question, what's driving that, and what does that mean for us?
Well, if you, if you go back to, which was right at the beginning, the multi-tiered systems of support, that's actually what data shows is like, what we should be seeing. And so, what I would argue is actually, when we're seeing, I mean, 12% is pretty average across, across the country. We do want to be lower than 12% usually, because what we want to do is meet the needs of kids in tier one and tier two. Anything above 12% actually is considered high. And this is something, you know, FICMAT will, which we'll talk about later, School Crisis-
Management.
Management.
Yeah.
We'll get to that acronym later. You know, they do, they do look at this, and they also want to see us, you know, 12% or lower. One thing I do want to highlight about slide 56 or 58, 58?
68.
68, sorry. Is that when this was actually shown to us in our county, they were calling out Dublin for actually keeping the special education impact as low as it is and staying relatively flat.
They also called out Pleasanton.
Sorry, I apologize. They called out Pleasanton, not Dublin. They didn't call us out, but they should have. Because I actually see this as a success, that we're, we're staying relatively flat, to Brian's point, and that means that we're actually doing, and this is something teachers have shared multiple times, we're actually doing a really good job at tier one and tier two, for the most part. We do, where I would say, we want to actually look as probably at our disproportionality, not for special education, but along other lines, around socioeconomic levels, and also around race and ethnicity. So that will be something we'll be talking about in future board presentations.
And just to piggyback just on your question, I think, just anecdotally, being in Albany a long time and observations, I think we have a teaching staff that tends to not turn over as much as a lot of other districts. And so I think there's a piece of the ability to like, support students in the way they need to be supported in the classroom, instead of over-identifying because the kid's busting out because it's not working, you know, which is, which is like, a school problem as opposed to a kid problem, but when something's not working for a kid, then you're like, okay, well then, let's test for special ed. And I do think there's a piece in Albany where we have lower turnover, we do a lot of work with supporting, our teachers work really hard to support students in the classroom, and so I also think that, that, and people really do have a very strong lens about child find and looking for kids who have needs, it's not that that's not there, I feel like that's super present, but I feel like my take on this is we probably over-identify less because of the stability, but that's just my two cents.
And I think that the data just shows that it's staying within that, it's staying within that tier one's level of support, the percentage target that you guys set for Thank you. So, on the busier slide, it's basically showing a three-year trend of all of our expenditures, what our revenue was, what our local contribution is. The local contribution is basically our encroachment on the general fund, so I just want to put that out there. So what that means is that, aside from, I'll draw, I always go to the summary level first, I borrowed this chart format from the county. So if you go down to the last three rows, you can see that our expenditures are gradually growing still. You could take a look at our revenue, it's not gradually growing. And then if you look at the local contribution, that is also growing, and that's, that's just basically telling us that high-level story that we need to continue to basically encroach on a general fund, that need is still there in order for us to be able to provide the level of services that we committed ourselves to. One of the things, because we talked about, you know, service costs, increasing services costs earlier, if you look at the certificated classified benefits, I like to lump sum that, really, if you look from '24 through '25 to '26, you can see that the totals, without having the exact figure calculated out here, it stays relatively around the same range. And so, that further actually tells us the story that there's, there's not enough people filling the positions to fulfill all the needs, and therefore, the service contracts on the service line, you could see that that is growing. I did the quick math, too, on the revenue to contributions, and it does show that we're getting funding for roughly, ballpark is around 40% of what the program cost requirement's going to be. And then it just illustrates, it gives, on the right-hand side, just kind of putting it out there, just to show that there's a county average that they're also using, so how do we compare ourselves to the county? And I think that we're actually doing an okay job at not like, over-distributing our costs to running our program.
I want to pause here if there's any questions specifically about this slide.
I mean, the math I'm doing, it's, I'm trying, so, rough numbers I always hold in my head is roughly 10% of our kids, about 15, 16% of our budget is special ed. I'm trying to do the mental, I'm trying to do the math on, I don't know what the right number is for either one of those, like any of us, that's what I do, but I think about, what is, what is, how should I think about whether or not, do we have a point of view on what, what the right number is? And I think what this is going to tell me, and I haven't computed everybody else's, but I'm, other people are going to be of a significantly higher spread. Those are per student costs are that much more, so to tell us that where our costs are not, we're doing better than most already.
Yes. I actually, I actually took a look at our county, Alameda County, and you can see Alameda Unified is up there at 30% of their budget is actually spent on special education programming. Saliandro falls in at 25%. You have quite a few districts, like four or five different districts, that's spending about 25%.
Yeah, that's exactly.
I didn't actually add that, I was doing some additional, yeah, but I can add that as like a, what do you call that, an extra fact sheet later.
Yeah, because I was doing, I was doing the rough per student cost. So I was combining slide 52 with slide, whatever this one was. So Berkeley's spending $52 million a year on special ed is the way I got to.
He said Berkeley?
Yeah. You're right. Got that. I hope that you were right. Yeah, I took the 11, 11.56 times roughly $43,000, $45,000 per student.
So, on the per student cost?
Slide 36.
I combined 46 and 52.
This is 46.
The word, the answer, the answer may be, yeah, we're doing better than most.
We're doing better than most.
I'm both, I'm both, I'm spreading the identification.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if I want to say that we're doing better, I think we have a different program.
Berkeley has a full inclusion program, which is definitely a more costly program.
Yeah, so fair, so fair. So let me be more precise with my language. From a cost perspective, we're doing better than most. We haven't had a conversation really yet about efficacy from an education and student achievement perspective, so sorry, that's a fair, that's a fair call-out.
Yeah, yeah, and I think, I think as we think about that, I think the question you're asking is a really good one. Like, if we look across different, different districts in our SELPA, across our county, across California, what would be a good ratio of, of how much we're spending per child? And a part of that conversation has to be, and are we meeting the students' needs?
Yeah.
How do we know that we're meeting their needs? Because if we're not, if we're spending a ton of money and we're not meeting their needs, that's not good, and if we're not spending enough money, but we are meeting their needs, well, good for us. And somewhere in the middle is what we're doing, right?
Yeah, but I'm in agreement, like, I'm, the, glad the conversations here are on money, but that's, at the end of the day, what's much more important is, are we getting the right results from a kid perspective?
Right.
And, I don't know, I would love to figure out how we can triangulate those different pieces, because I don't think, I don't, I don't feel like I have a good hold on that yet, either.
I mean, that's a really good question, and I think that that coincides with what we were sharing earlier, too, in terms of like, FTE comparison and so forth, is that the contractual obligations are also different, right? Between different districts, and that could drive the cost, but, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Next slide, please. So this is just a prettier version of hopefully, ease, more easily illustrating to you all the differences in terms of the revenue that comes in, you can see it's coming down, we're not getting enough. If you're taking a look at the expenses, it's growing, that green bar is growing to 11.9 million, and so, you can expect that in order for us to actually meet the obligation, the local contribution or the encroachment on the general fund also goes up. And you can see that, right now, we're projecting that that would be close to six and a half million. It grows from six to six and a half million. Next slide, please. Next slide, please, yes. Oh, sorry. These glasses. The readers don't do the same for Faraway. Thank you. So this just further illustrates, even on a per-student basis, on the right-hand column is that it requires us to invest more per student, actually, to contribute to the program. Next slide. So in terms of all the functional areas, so we didn't do a comparison in terms of what other school districts are doing, but where we're faring out most of our cost is actually in that first one for mild, moderate support needs, and then it gradually grows. At first, it was a super busy slide, I decided to sort it to make it look a little bit simpler. Extensive support needs comes in second, NPA, NPS, you can see fares right there, in third place there. And I won't go through all of it, but this is just a good summary of where we're putting all of our funds. So, we talked a bit about maintenance of effort earlier, so as Sarah mentioned, the superintendent, Sarah, she mentioned that this is pretty much a measurement of whether or not we are meeting our minimum requirement, which, in layman's terms, it means that, are we spending exactly the same amount in terms of state and local funds? They measure it for our state and local funds. Are we meeting our minimum requirement, or is it going higher? It can't go less, it has to go either at or above. So with that said, if I go to next slide, this is the calculation that we provide, actually, to our SELPA office, so Bryant, Dr. Biggs mentioned earlier that the SELPA actually helps us to make sure that we're compliant, and they establish these tools where the school districts provide information and calculation support to make sure that we're actually meeting that, and on the right-hand side, most important piece is that we've passed over the last three years. As I mentioned, that if we aren't able to actually meet this obligation, there could be consequences that's not like finite, right? Auditors could write us up with an audit finding, it could be monetary, it could be others. The, you know, the consequences for not meeting this is actually pretty risky, and so I just want to make sure I have a chance to call that out. I won't, I won't bore more conversation about it, because I know we talked about it earlier, but do we have other questions about this part? Yes.
What would the consequence be if you were not at or above from the previous year? Because we talked about there would be a consequence, what would the consequence be? Is it like a fine, is it some kind of status, or?
It could be both. We won't, we won't achieve, oh, sorry. There's a high likelihood that we won't actually achieve our, we won't pass our audit, right? There'll be a warning for us on the audit, which is never good for a school district, and secondarily, it could be a fine. But to, from working with previous auditing agencies, that could vary in broad range, how they determine what the fine should be. Any more questions on the fiscal piece? Yes.
On the, the bar chart, two back, other, the other category is, what's in that? That's very high. On the left, right there.
Yes, it's a combination, I'm sorry. Luckily, it's not too heavy. It's a combination, I think, of a lot of smaller needs that we're providing to the students, but we could certainly put in the appendix or provide that as a follow-up with the details of what that encompasses. It's, it's like that last catch-all bucket, which you bring up a good point, then it ends up becoming quite high in terms of total cost.
Just budget overall, I think that's where we're questions-wise now.
Yeah.
Dollar sign questions. Just, are there things that rise to top of mind where, yes, if we had more money, we would do X? Like, discreet, sort of, you know, these are the things that we're like, we would have one more of this type of person, or we would have, you know?
I think Sarah's reaction answered it.
Yes, yes. I'll let, I'll let Dr. Biggs answer some of those. Do you want to answer, or do you want me to?
I can answer, but-
You get, you-
So, I, I think for, in my position as the director, I'd love for us to have a better continuum of support for our students in special education, but I'd also like to have a better continuum of supports for our students in the whole district. I think a lot of what we could do as a district is invest more in some of our tier-two supports, such as responding to some of the California trends, when we're dealing with some of our earliest learners who are struggling, you know, acclimating to a new school, to a school system, acclimating to, you know, the various different, you know, demands for learning. I think that could be a really great referral preventative measure for- I think that could be a really great referral preventative measure for hopefully mitigating students who have larger behaviors who we're catching in special education. But I also feel like in special education, we need a mild, moderate support needs special day class or a self-contained program to catch our students who are those in-between students who still can reach the grade level standards, but need much more small group learn, wraparound support within a school setting instead of being sent off to a non-public school. I also feel that some of our older students in particular really struggle, have a, we've had a huge increase in social, emotional challenges over the years. And I think, I mentioned it at the last board presentation in January, I think we've done a really great job at Albany High School on piloting a program, which I refer to as a counseling-enriched light program. It really is hallmark of the work of the principal and our teacher, Barbara Amino. And the challenge is whenever I talk about how great a program is, it shouldn't just be based on the teacher, it should be based on the program design. And Barbara Amino has definitely created a huge impact for our students, but when I think about what is needed for those students, I need to think about, not just about Barbara Amino, I need to think about the embedded counseling supports that aren't there. I need to think about much more case management for the students that are really in-between short-term hospitalization program and really trying to get ahead of it so that we're not thinking about a district placement in a residential. So I think being able to look at some of our programs, like the piloted program of our launch counseling-supported light program at the high school, and really fleshing out what essential supports would be necessary to make it a program to be sustainable, not just based on a position or a person.
So when I hear that, though, what I hear is, I actually don't hear more money. What I hear is those things should be, would theoretically be paying for themselves because of the improved outcomes and the, and the offset on other services you would need to provide in order to support those kids. And if that's the right interpretation, I had a question, then why, why don't we do those things?
So I think, you know, that's a, that's a really great question. And, you know, there used to be someone that, it was part of the community that always say pay now or pay later. And I know that's a really hard thing for districts, is to really think about anticipate, like invest in some programmatic structural changes to prevent, to reduce the outside cost. And so it would be great if we were to be able to have the conversation of being able to move forward with investing in a licensed clinical social worker that provided that wrap support for some of our students in special education district-wide, and being able to really be a pillar of that program as well as some other supports throughout the district.
I think the complexity, though, is that what you just said is yes, and what I'm hearing you say is, well, it would just really mean, instead of putting, investing over here, we invest over here. The reality, though, is that, I mean, I do want to draw back to the NP, the NPS placements, which is our third highest cost. We can't just say, okay, everybody come back. I mean, there's a special education process, and there's a special education process for all of this. And so what it would mean is that we would have to invest at the beginning, and then we'd get the, we'd get it back on the back end. However, then you also have to pay attention to the MOE. So there's, there's a lot of complexity in how we would go about doing that. I would say all the things that Dr. Biggs mentioned are things that we, if we could invest in those, in this district, we will start to see a shift back. And also, I would also say we would probably see a shift in some of our, some of the money that we're paying out to families because we haven't served them in the way that they wanted, or they needed to be served. The other thing I would say that you did not mention is more behavior supports. Since COVID, and I, we didn't bring up COVID intentionally throughout this whole thing, because I do not want to blame COVID on everything, however, since COVID, there has been an uptick in how many students are being diagnosed with autism. There's a question I have in my head, I don't know what it is, I don't know why. Is it because of the, how students were developmentally unable to be around their peers at that time? Is it because they were learning how to organize their thinking through a mask and not seeing people actually articulate, not, not being able to understand social cues? And some of those things end up seeming like autistic-like behaviors. Again, I am, I am not a, I do not do cycle educational analysis, I'm not a psychologist, but it's a question I have. And so going back to what you were saying about investing on the front end, it would cost us more at the beginning, and we may actually start to see fewer and fewer kids being diagnosed, or maybe even perhaps misdiagnosed with, with autism. So those are things we really want to be thinking about during this budgeting cycle this year, and thinking about how we can invest now to, to get the returns later.
It's funny, because that was the exact same thing I wrote down, was is there a higher need for special education services due to other unmet needs? I didn't think quite exactly of like COVID-related, but just in general. But the other thing it makes me think of is also, I wonder how our data looks compared to other school districts with similar, like college town where we have international students or other, like large populations that are moving in and out. And I wonder how much similarities or differences we would see in that. Obviously, I don't expect anyone to answer that, but it just, I think as we're wrapping up, that keeps coming back in the back of my mind, so, yeah.
We actually started to get into the next section, thanks to your question. Key challenges and opportunities, and I wanted to bring us into that section. So we've talked a lot about the complexity tonight. It's very complex because of compliance, because of how, how challenging it is on a day-to-day basis, just to, to do the work well. The limited resources we have, recruitment, and some things around development. I will say that these are also all opportunities. There's an opportunity in each one of these things, and I think we've started to talk a little bit about how we can maybe do things in, maybe look at it a different, from a different angle or a different way, or even look at investing in a different time and place around this so that we can start to, to shift this. Go ahead, yeah. So one of the things that I had mentioned earlier is the Financial Crisis Management Assessment Team, FICMAT. FICMAT is, you don't want FICMAT to come into your district when you don't want them to, but they can be a very, very good resource when you want them to. Because what they can do is, it's an independent state agency that can come into a local education agency and look at how we're spending our money. And we can ask them very specifically to say, can you do a special education analysis? To try to answer some of the questions that came up today, so we don't have to spend our time going out and researching, they can give it to us, and they can tell us. The other thing they can do is they can say, hey, here's something you might not even notice that could become an audit finding at some point. You might want to pay attention here. Or here's a way that you might think about doing this different. Here's a way that you can keep your maintenance of effort, but also shift maybe how you're doing some things. And so I, one of the things I think would be helpful for us, if we actually contacted FICMAT and said, hey, can you just do, can you, can you look at what we're doing? Help us understand, is the 9% the right percent? Is, is, or the 10% to the 15% budget, is that, is, are we, are we in the right, are we in the ballpark? What are we not thinking about? And it will help us as a team to kind of, not kind of, to create a roadmap around how we can improve the supports and services for our students and mitigate the cost. It probably won't help us with our staffing and recruitment, but that is also something as the next step. We are actually reaching out, we, we've already contacted one agency called the Black Teacher Project, because we want to really make sure not only are we increasing the number of teachers who come into our district to have special education certification, we also know that we want to diversify our staff, and we could do both at the same time, which would be amazing. And we are also going to be working closely with Alameda County Office of Ed on some of those recruitment strategies. Like I said, they've done some really great things, and they want to pilot and work with districts. And we, of course, raised our hand and said, we want help, we'll, we'll take your help. Small district, we need help. So that's one thing I wanted to mention. And I think ultimately, we want to figure out those, those top three mid-year adjustments that we might want to make to ensure that we're continuing to move in the right direction. So this was a good start to the conversation. I think there were a lot of really good questions that came up that I would like to bring back as a team for us to talk about and think about, and then I would encourage us to then come back and do a kind of a short present, a shorter presentation on some of the things that we've thought about and things that we're thinking about doing as we move forward. But I did want to, in our last, well, no, we're late. President Hopwood, do we want to do something about that?
Oh, yes, that's.
Maybe.
I didn't know it had to be a delegate at nine, but yeah, we can do that, we can move to extend by, I don't do think we need.
I would, I would, honestly, I would like 10 more minutes.
Sorry. Thank you. We don't have close session?
No. It's very short.
Should we say 15 minutes? Okay, so who would like to move to extend?
I move that we extend the section of the meeting for 15 minutes till 9:17.
Great. Second motion, you all in favor? Aye. Okay, yes, we extended.
Thank you very much. Yeah, what I would like to do is actually just, just highlight this last part. What are some of the things that, from this conversation, are we thinking, might be things we want to go back and look at more, talk about more, and bring back to you all as a discussion item at a future board meeting?
Was that a question?
Yes. I have kind of a out-of-the-box thought. I think what was coming up in this presentation, it kind of reminded me of what Deb led with the, I'm forgetting what it was called, but around talking about race and bullying and all that kind of stuff, and you guys created these videos and stuff for parents to engage children with, and I wonder if there's something like that that we could work with for parents around special education. And I only say this because like even when my kid got his diagnosis, like I thought I understood autism, and then I realized I actually didn't. And there was a lot of like learning and relearning things for myself and trying to figure out how to support my kid, but I, like, I think of a lot of parents that, you know, you don't always expect to get a diagnosis, but when you do, you get overwhelmed with a lot of information all at once, and you don't know how to figure it all out. And I wonder how much of that, it can also just show up in the form of like giving parents tools on, like bridging that, like, yes, we're getting MTSS and UDL at school, but what might be being missed because we as parents don't have the tools to continue that level of support at home, whether it's with homework, whether it's just like, just reading or whatever it might be. And I wonder how that could potentially shift not only that, like trust that we're trying to build within this community, but also just equipping parents to be able to support their kids better. And I don't say this as like, oh, we're the only one, like the district's the only one that knows how to do this, but like just from a parent perspective, I, I wonder how that could be helpful.
Unfortunately. So the one, the one thing we didn't do a lot of conversation about, I'd love to have a better sense of how do I understand student performance? And by that, I mean not just academic, but sense of belonging and all those other sorts of metrics we think around students. In particular, and I realize we have a lot of the same metrics that we have for other places, but one of the challenges I feel, and maybe it's wrong, is that this population, this understanding trends with this population is really difficult, given the different disabilities, the different, relatively small set of, set of students, and, and how things change on a high degree of frequency. So while we've had a lot of conversations here around identification, some of the things that we're doing to support, support kids through that, as well as the financial piece, I feel like the, the third leg of the stool I'm missing is thinking about student outcomes to figure out whether or not we're, you know, doing what we want to do to, to support that. So I, and I have, I literally have no idea of how to think about that, so guys and Sarah would be great.
I have a question about what's on the screen. So, because I'm still confused by the non-question, but, so these are suggested next steps that you're providing to us, is that correct?
Yeah, these are the next steps that I'm, I would like for us to take. And so what I wanted to do is just open up a little bit more about, are there other things that we should be thinking about? And specifically around long- and short-term actions? Because we're going to prioritize top three mid-year adjustments, what are some of those things you might want us to prioritize?
Yes, on, okay, good. So actually, related to what Trustee Khan was talking about, which I think is super awesome ideas, and maybe would be incorporated anyway, but when we were talking about how there's a bit of a bridge in some ways, or something that needs a bridge over it, to, with regard to what caregivers know about what is offered for students, where, you know, you don't necessarily need to have a, a new, you know, I don't know if diagnosis is the right word, but, but a new status in the district that, you know, these supports are available in the, in the wider general classroom situation. So that the, the educating of caregivers that Trustee Khan was talking about could involve also that sort of, this is what we offer, make sure that people know what they need to know. And then also what Vice President Mahoney was talking about before, so maybe is already going to happen. But I think having some sort of an update to us where we can, to the extent possible, track the implementation and progress on MTSS and UDL in whatever way makes sense, it's some of that may be anecdotal as opposed to data, sort of student feedback, to the extent they feel comfortable sharing it on how their needs are being met now, maybe versus, you know, some time before, just these have been really big pushes on, from the district standpoint over the last couple of years. So to really understand what the success has been or continues to be, again, in whatever way makes sense, would be helpful.
Okay, now I'm going to make my statement about what's on there. So streamline and reorganize. I don't know what exactly that means. I know it's something that would be discussed, I suppose, but we've had a lot of change in this year and last, and when I see that, my immediate thought is, oh my gosh, do not make another change until there's real buy-in from everybody, teachers have been talked to. Let's not make some of the changes that we've made and end up with a lot of very unhappy people. That's my statement, thank you.
I will, I will, it's not written well, but what this means is look at our continuum of services. Not reorganize our district, not, none of that. It's really how are we thinking about our special education supports and services, and how can we reorganize them to be more efficient and make sure that they're aligned to what we, our students actually need? That's what that actually means. Does that help? Okay.
I mean, yes, except that it would still be another change that would impact the district, and it needs to be thought out and communicated and bought in before it happens, in my opinion.
Yeah, absolutely. Agree.
And just to double on that a little bit, the, one of the things I think we heard here today is that our, despite our reaction that we had a cost challenge, we don't actually have a cost challenge. That in general, we're doing, what I took away from today is we're doing better than most, at least in terms of looking at the comparable. So while there may be an opportunity to get better, then we should take it if we can. It may not be the burning issue that at least I probably came into this conversation and into this idea thinking about, so I would just prioritize accordingly along those lines.
I have a quick question for Dr. Biggs. I mean, what's your feeling about having a review, a FICMAT review? Is that something that you would welcome and would think would be? Is that something that you would welcome and would think would be helpful?
Data is critical for making informed decisions. As much as we talked about cost and SSDs, this is a great way to get all of our data together in special education so that we can make informed decisions and do better for our students and our community.
Great. So you're in. Yeah.
Yes.
So that seems like a great starting point. Yeah.
I guess I would just say, I would want us to focus on actual, how our teachers and staff who are providing these services feel, and how our families and students and caregivers who are receiving these services feel. So regardless of what any of these numbers seem to show about how we're doing compared to anyone else or anything, like, I think that should be the focus in how we determine whether we're doing well, doing better than most, et cetera, or not.
Well, there's a nice list. I appreciate it. And I think that, I appreciate what you said, Vice President Mahoney. I think it was really helpful for our team to actually put this together, because I think when we all worked together, we actually kind of came to the same conclusion. I think we also came to the conclusion that there are some things that we can do better and improve. And I think what you just mentioned is a really good next step, is to find out what our families and our staff and our students are thinking about what we're doing right now. I think we will reach out to FICMAT and talk to them and see. I think bare minimum, it'll give us some of the answers to the questions that were asked today, which will be really helpful for us as we continue to make decisions. And I just want to put a plug in that we are going to be doing data presentations moving forward, and so we'll make sure that we can start to answer the question that you asked about how we're actually doing in terms of student outcomes. I do want to just name, and I think you alluded to it, it's a little bit challenging when you're looking at student outcomes for students who have IEPs, because what we're really measuring are their IEP goals, and each and every student has a different set of goals. But overall, what we can look at, I think, is some of the anecdotal, and also, just, we should, all students should be able to meet standards, like, that is, and exceed. So we can start to look deeper at that and disaggregate in different ways. Any final thoughts from the team before we, last thoughts? Dr. Biggs, this is your baby. Anything you want to say? I'm making you say something.
Thank you. I tried to really hold back tonight. And I thought it was, I mean, I'm just going to give myself an A. Because, as you all know, I really...
That means I can talk.
I can. And so I was really trying to restrain, but I really appreciate the board, the leadership of Superintendent Stone, and the trusted colleagues that I have around this table to really, you know, come here and do the work of getting here today. And also, a shout-out to Gabriel Walter, because his involvement and what he has brought to our department and to our district has been amazing. And so it's been really great having him as a team member, a partner in crime, and being able to work with all of you. So I just wanted to say thank you.
Thanks to all of you and for your collaboration as well. I really appreciate the team effort. Thank you. And we are not having a closed session this evening. Am I correct?
Sure.
We have a topic. We do. Okay, right. So we should, are we okay now to adjourn this portion of the meeting to a closed session, and we'll report back with any action taken. Closed session. Thank you so much. Time now is 9:14. If we're doing closed session, though, we should take public comment on items, but are we, so we are going to adjourn to closed session to potentially, I'm sorry, to discuss potential litigation, public employee discipline/dismissal/release, conference for the labor negotiator, and public employee performance evaluation. Do we have any public comment? I don't, I'm going to have a quick look on the... And I'm seeing no hands raised, so we are going to adjourn to closed session. Thank you. Can I get your name tag? Good.